I'm going to call this meeting to order for September 10, 2020, State Board of Education meeting. Thank you for your patience. Just wanted to make sure that everyone was able to get on Zoom. So if you would, join me for a moment of silence as we just take the time to focus our hearts and our minds and our thoughts on the reason why we are here and we're assembled and the reason why we've been chosen to be on this board. And that reason is for the students of Arkansas. And let's just calm our hearts and our minds and focus on that and what we can do to help those students during our time. Okay. All right. And I believe this is where we need to add. Give me just a second to figure out exactly what we're supposed to be adding. The consideration for Little Rock School District has a CAB application for consideration for the current Zone 6, but soon to be Zone 2 under the new redistricting. So I'll ask if this would be considered... Oh, wait, that's new business. I'm sorry. Excuse me. My apology. Okay, so we're going to move on. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Okay, now, let's move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any questions, comments, or anything that needs to be pulled? Okay. Now, look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Mr. Brett Williamson. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Susan Chambers. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Okay, we're going to move on to the action agenda. Thank you. Embedded course approvals. Our presenter will be Dr. Tiffany Pride. And this has to do with the Act 421 embedded course approvals.
Good morning. I'm sorry. Tiffany Pride, Assistant Commissioner of Learning Services. The Division of Elementary and Secondary Education respectfully requests that the State Board of Education approves the embedded courses attached, understanding that when the curriculum frameworks for any of those courses are revised, a new course approval request must be submitted to the State Board of Education and approval must be granted before school would be allowed to offer those embedded courses.
Slow move.
I have a motion to approve by Ms. Susan Chambers. Seconded by Ms. Susan Chambers. Seconded by Ms. September Oliver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the motion. Thank you. Second is the consideration of the Arkansas Better Chance Round 2 Professional Service Grant. And we have a presenter.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Tyler, Division of Learning Services, and we are respectfully requesting the board to approve ABC Professional Service Grant to Southeast Educational Service Cooperative in the amount of $248,187.50. And these funds are to support the continuation of the AmeriCorps program. Members work with school districts across the southeast Arkansas education region in eight counties. There are 30 members and they each have 10 children that they provide tutoring services to in both small group and individually for those children who are most at risk. And I've looked at the outcomes from their grant services last year and 85% plus of the kids made progress on their kindergarten readiness skills in literacy and math.
Thank you, Ms. Tyler. Do we have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, entertain a motion. Approve? We have a motion to approve by Ms. Susan Chambers.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Sarah Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Tyler.
I think I have one more.
Yes, you do.
We are respectfully requesting the board to approve the Arkansas Better Chance Renewal Grant Round 3 for 2021 in the total amount of $253,500. These funds are requested to support the South Arkansas Developmental Center for Children and Families in El Dorado and 50 ABCSS slots.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or discussion?
This is a new place, or why are they giving these slots?
This is not a new place. Their application was under review and we have worked with them and will continue to do so as well as some close monitoring this year. So we delayed approval of their application based upon submission of some items that we'd requested.
Okay, and now it has been...
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions or discussion? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Ms. Kathy McFetrich, seconded by Mr. Williamson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have State Board Review of PLSB Ethics Hearing Committee Recommendation for Charles Perry Parliament.
Thank you, Ms. Steen. Lauren Frino with the Department of Education, I will be introducing this item, which will be handled by Amy Douglas.
Okay.
This is an appeal of an ethics hearing subcommittee's recommendation that Charles Parliament receive a written warning and training. Mr. Parliament is here today and he is being represented by his lawyer, Greg Allagood. And as I mentioned, Amy Douglas will be presenting the case on behalf of the Professional License or Standards Board. And if I may go over the procedures, first, Mr. Parliament or his lawyer may take up to 10 minutes to present, and then Ms. Douglas likewise will have 10 minutes to make a statement. Additional time can be granted to either side by the Chair of the Board at the Chair's discretion. Board members may ask questions at any time during the proceedings to Ms. Douglas, to the educator, to his attorney, or to the PLSB investigator. Testimony of non-lawyers must be taken under oaths. Following the hearing, the Board must make three decisions. And the first, you'll need to make findings of fact. In other words, you'll need to determine whether you agree with the ethics hearing subcommittee's decision with regard to the facts in the case. Second, if you do agree with the facts, you'll need to determine whether, based upon those facts, Mr. Parliament violated Standard 2 of the Code of Ethics for Arkansas Educators. And third, if you determine Mr. Parliament violated Standard 2, you must determine whether you agree with the sanction imposed in the case, which again was a written reprimand and training, or rather, or whether you want to modify it. If you do not agree with the sanction, you may modify it. And it would be best, Ms. Steen, to take these three items in three separate motions.
Thank you, Ms. Frino.
And if there are no questions from anyone, I will relinquish the floor to Ms. Douglas and Mr. Allagood.
Good morning. Amy Douglas, the PLSB. Actually, the educator has the burden on this, so they go first.
Thank you.
Hello. I am Greg Allagood, an attorney here in Little Rock, and I pretty much had said everything that I wanted to say in the brief that I had submitted on behalf of Mr. Parliament. He, however, wanted to avail himself of his right to personally address you. So with that being said, with your permission, I would like to relinquish the podium to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allagood.
Mr. Parliament? You're stable.
Good morning, Mr. Parliament.
Good morning.
Before you speak, I'd like to swear you in.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, before you speak, I'd like to swear you in.
Oh, my name is Charles Perry Parliament.
Sir. Mr. Parliament, if you'll allow me to swear you in first?
Okay.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give... If you'll raise your hand, if you'll raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Parliament. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'm here today because I have an allegation that I have violated the Code of Ethics, and that's not true. An incident happened at the school in which a girl was twerking in the classroom, and I didn't even know what twerking was before this incident happened. But nevertheless, anyone who has worked with children with emotional disturbances, oppositional defiant behaviors, compulsive behaviors, hyperactive, anyone who has worked with special ed kids in the high school level know that just about anything that can happen will happen. Now, this incident was an embarrassment to the school because one of the students put the incident on Instagram and it went out to, for other people to see. And I got the incident under control. I got them settled down. It took me a few minutes, but I did. They also alleged that I didn't do anything to stop the incident or that I allowed the incident. Allow means you give permission. Now, who in the world would believe that I gave a 17-year-old girl permission to pull her pants down in the classroom and twerk? That just didn't happen. And I didn't even know the incident, that she had her pants down, until I had seen it on a video later. Now, this incident, I went into that classroom to try to help. It wasn't, it wasn't a normal classroom to start with. This was in-school suspension. This was a place where kids who had failed, or they had been misbehaving in class, and they had been placed in this room until the parents could come and get them or security could take them home. I had been working with some of the students in the room. That's why I volunteered to go in there and relieve the coach. When I work with kids, I try to establish a meeting of the minds or a relationship with them. And I had done that with two or three of the kids that were in that classroom. I do that by getting their attention, their interest, their belief, their desire, and their action, and then gearing the curriculum so that they can be successful. Some of my students in that room were not successful. They had failed and they were mad and they were going to react, they were going to do something, you know, reacting. But luckily, time has a way, I mean, the truth will surface after a period of time. You agree with that? Sometimes when an incident happens and the truth eventually comes on up? Well, it did in my case. One of the students, Kalen Torres, when I was accused of not doing anything to call in security or anything of that nature, she testified that I sent her to the office to get security, which I did, and I sent her with another girl to get security. Security wasn't there, and the security officer, I understand, is no longer employed there. But this was a day of school when it wasn't a normal day and it wasn't a normal classroom. If it had been, we wouldn't have this problem. But how can you say a teacher committed a violation of ethics for something that a student did? It's like an accident. If you have an accident out here on the street, if you know it's going to happen, you can prevent it. I didn't know this was going to happen. Kabam, it just happened. Now, I've been a special education teacher and I've been, I also hold an administrator school, an administrator certificate, and an ed specialist degree. Today's my birthday, and I hope that you guys will rule that I didn't violate any of the Code of Ethics. Some of the previous board or previous hearings, they've said that I didn't because I don't think they felt like I did enough to stop the incident. Well, I walked over to them, I told them to stop. I sent Kalen Torres to the office to get security. I went back to my desk and I sat down. And when I told them to stop, that was to get in their seats. It wasn't because they were twerking because there was a wall of students between me and where the student was that was twerking, if that makes sense.
Can you, can you go back to the mic, sir, so that we can hear you?
I'm sorry?
Can you go back to the mic so that we can hear you? Go.
Oh, okay.
Stay close to the mic, please.
Anyway, there was a wall of students between me and I couldn't see what was going on, but I knew they were out of their seat. And I had told, my rule is only one person on the floor at a time. One person at the pencil sharpener, one person at the bathroom, and, you know, just one person moving at a time. Well, the main point is that I got the incident under control. It was an embarrassment to the school, and I think that was a... Well, in working with these kids, there are other kids who, for instance, Kalen said after I... See, I wasn't allowed to talk to them after I was dismissed from school. I wasn't even allowed to go back on the property. And it's just fortunate that I knew Kalen's telephone number so I could call her mom. And I asked Kalen, I said, "What happened?" I said, "Can you tell me exactly, why did you go to the office or what was going on?" And she said that, "Do you want me to go up there to school and straighten them teachers out, straighten those administrators out?" And I said, "No, I don't think that'll be necessary." But, I mean, what I'm saying is, there were other students that would have done the same thing. But I didn't want this to be a big, a big deal. Who would want it out on the public and the screen, on the TV or whatever? It's already been on Instagram. And, and I'm just asking you to say that I didn't violate the Code of Ethics. And if you'll do that, I'll be forever grateful because I, I don't feel that I violated any Code of Ethics. I got the incident stopped and I had a good working relationship with some of the students in that classroom, and others were just... I was trying to appease them a little bit. But, but when you look at the video, here I am sitting at my desk here, like I'm not doing a darn thing. That's not true. Because I had already tried to do things and I had sent for security, and I was waiting for security to come. Because I can't touch the students, I can't go over there and say, you know, say, "Sit your butt down" or whatever, I can give them mean looks and talk to them. And I did that, and that got them under control. By the time the administration and, and the security got there, everything was normal. They were in their seats, doing their work. We weren't having any problems. This was just a flare-up incident that occurred. And it could happen to any teacher. Because 17, 16, 17, 18-year-old girls can just do, you know, they, they can really get, get under your skin sometimes. And they, they were just, you know, I don't, I don't know why they did it, but they did it. Also, this twerking is, most people don't realize this, but it, it was going on, it was a fad. You know what a fad is? You know, you remember streaking back in the 60s or 70s when, when the streak? Well, that was kind of the way this twerking was going on. And it wasn't going on just at, at Hall High School, it was going on on schools in Florida and other places. There's an incident in Florida where a coach...
Mr. Parliament?
My time up?
Your, your 10 minutes is up. If you would bring your statement to a close.
Okay. I'm asking you to please find that I did not violate the Code of Ethics in this incident. And if you'll do that, I'll be forever grateful because I don't feel that I did, and most of the students in the room, well, all of them, don't feel that I did. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your help.
Thank you, Mr. Parliament. Ms. Douglas, you have 10 minutes as well.
Good morning. Amy Douglas, PLSB. So prior to today, you've all received written briefs and objections from myself as well as educator's attorney, a transcript and a video. Mr. Parliament had an affidavit in chair hearing. Two of the three witnesses that were called were on his behalf. So based on the evidence, the hearing subcommittee lowered his recommended sanction from a three-year probation to a written reprimand. They found that he violated Standard 2 of the Code of Ethics. Standard 2 reads, "An educator maintains competence regarding his or her professional practice inclusive of skills, knowledge, dispositions, and responsibilities relating to his or her organizational position." Specifically, they found that Mr. Parliament allowed inappropriate behaviors by students. To support that finding, they stated that there was a failure to supervise students and enforce discipline policies resulting in inappropriate student behavior. Mr. Parliament contends that he didn't violate the Code of Ethics. I submit to you that a violation was proven by a preponderance of the evidence, which is more likely than not that it's true. The evidence is clear. You've seen the video, you have the transcript. I'm asking you to uphold the sanction from the subcommittee.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Do we have any questions, discussion? No?
I have a question.
Okay.
From Ms. Douglas, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I want to get an understanding of a written reprimand. When that occurs, is that something that goes on a teacher's license? What does that look like?
Yes, it does, in the L system, go on their license. It is not publicly viewable.
Okay, so how long does that stay on the license?
It stays on the license internally.
Okay.
But it's not publicly viewable for a school district.
Okay, so if you were to seek employment elsewhere, would they, they would not have any knowledge of the written reprimand?
They would have knowledge of it based on the order on the, on the State Board website.
Right.
And that would be there for at least two years, I believe.
Okay. Okay, but that's it after that point in time?
Yeah, it would be removed.
Okay. And nothing, once you receive a written reprimand or even probation, nothing prohibits you from being hired in a new district or your old district? Is that correct?
That is correct. There, it does not prevent you from teaching at all.
Okay, and this did not, this written reprimand did not result in termination of a district? That was a district's decision? Is that correct?
Right, they were not mutually exclusive.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question. In, in that violation, were there any training that's going to be required for, that maybe I didn't see, to deal, if it's going to be in that classroom with, with that population of students?
The, the training that was suggested was the Code of Ethics training, then also the power, the power paradox, how we gain and lose influence, then also the 85% solution, how personal accountability guarantees success, no nonsense, no excuses.
There's some more questions or discussion?
Can we, can we question him at all?
Sure.
Can I, can he come back?
Mr. Parliament?
Can you come back up?
If you would answer a few questions, please.
Yeah, I wonder. I just had a... When, when you mentioned the relationships within the class, did you know any of these students? I think you mentioned outside the classroom. I mean, because as you've been a special education teacher, right? And so, do, do you normally, you said you, you substituted or you went in for the coach? You just, you went in to relieve, that's, that kind of, you went in as a substitute for that coach? Is that right?
Yes, sir. This wasn't a normal...
So that's not your normal...
I was there to help. I had free time and I was trying to help.
So that's not your normal responsibility?
No, it's not my normal responsibility.
So you're not normally in that setting?
Right.
So you went in that setting to help somebody else?
Right.
So you're not trained to help, you're not trained to, to, to monitor special ed students? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, yes, I am. I've, I've, I have just about every education hour that you can have. I mean, I've, I've, you know, I did my master's and did my ed specialist. I had all kinds of behavior control.
But I heard you say that, that, that environment, the, the things that were going on in that classroom that day, that was so different for you.
It was different for me because it was an incident that happened that I had no control over. Because they just up and did it, bam. And I think it was more or less pulling a prank on the school with Instagram on their part. The student that, that was twerking there, let me, let me check this. Only two weeks before this incident, I had written, written her up, and we had had a conference in the, in Dr. Overton's office about her behavior, her hyperactivity, dancing and so forth. And a fight broke out between the mama and the daughter in which they were slapping each other, and security and the police came in, and I left it to Dr. Overton. The conference should have been held in the special ed office because I kind of got some control over it in the special ed office, but in, in Dr. Overton's office, very small, confined area, and it, it just didn't...
I, I got that. I guess my question, you volunteered to go in there to help? That's what I guess I'm...
Yes, sir. I volunteered to go in there and help.
So, but you probably wouldn't do that again, would you?
Well...
Based on what has happened?
Knowing, knowing what happened now, I wouldn't.
Okay, all right.
But I mean, I'm, I'm there to help kids. I mean, I love kids and I like, nothing is more enjoyable than, than taking a kid who is having all kinds of problems in school and home and whatever, and talking to them and taking them through those five steps and gearing the curriculum and watching them be successful and, and watching them grow up and become somebody. And I, I've got students now in Jacksonville that come by and, and see me and, you know, some of them are very successful in life and I've got a few that aren't, but...
Okay, no, no, no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parliament.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Any further questions? Ms. Newton and then Ms. McFetrich.
Are you employed right now?
No, I'm not. I'm, I've applied for a job.
And we had had a conference in the prin, in Dr. Overton's office about her behavior, her hyperactivity, dancing and so forth. And a fight broke out between the mama and the daughter in which they were slapping each other. And security and the police came in. And I left it to Dr. Overton. The conference should have been held in the special ed office because I kind of got some control over it in the special ed office. But in, in Dr. Overton's office, very small confined area, and it, it just didn't-
I, I, I got that. I guess my question, uh, you volunteered to go in there to help? That's what I guess I'm-
Yes, sir. I volunteered to go in there and help.
So, but you probably wouldn't do that again, would you?
Well-
Based on what has happened?
Knowing, knowing what happened now, I, I wouldn't.
Okay, alright, that's all.
But I mean, I'm, I'm there to help kids. I mean, I love kids and I like, nothing is more enjoyable than, than taking a kid who is having all kinds of problems in school and home and whatever and talking to them and taking them through those five steps and gearing the curriculum and watching them be successful. And, and watching them grow up and become somebody. And I, I, I've got students now in Jacksonville that come by and, and see me and, uh, you know, some of them are very successful in life. And I've got a few that aren't, but-
Okay, no, no, no further comments. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Parliament.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Any further questions? Uh, Ms. Newton and then Ms. McFetrich.
Uh, are you employed right now?
No, I'm not. I'm, I've applied for a job, but I can't get a job because this is hanging over my head.
Okay.
That's why I want it, I want it either lifted or, or, uh, you know, I'm gonna have to do something.
Okay. Um, at the particular, this, at this particular time, uh, you are a special ed teacher, though?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And then, um, have you ever mentored another teacher at any time?
Ever mentored? Yes.
Okay. In, whenever you're mentoring teachers and, and, and talking to teachers, have you ever discussed with them, um, discipline and making sure that you're up moving around in a classroom?
Oh, yes, that's, that's normal procedure. Absolutely.
Right. And, and so, you know, that, that's the thing that I think bothers me most about this is that, uh, you know, one of the things that I, I, in the past, I've really talked to new teachers about is that a lot of your problems can be avoided before they ever happen if you're up moving around and, and seeing what's going on.
Just about any time I've ever written a referral, I've reflected on it and I've seen where I probably could have done something to have prevented it. But if I take the students through those steps that I just explained to you, then normally my job is gearing the curriculum and they're learning and they're happy and smiling and doing their work. And I don't have any discipline problems whatsoever with them.
Right, right. But, you know, as a teacher, we have to, to realize that any time that we set foot in any classroom or even on the school grounds, you know, it may not be your particular classroom, but any time that we step on school grounds, we have a responsibility to all students. And, and so, you know, that, I think that's what is, that's what stands out to me most of all in, in this case, I think.
When, when behave, misbehavior occurs, the time to correct it is right then.
Yes, yes, sir.
The, the previous people that I've talked to, as far as I know, none of them were special ed teachers. And the, you know, coming through this process to get here. But I can assure you, I didn't do anything wrong. I was trying to do everything right. I did get it, the situation under control. I've had practically every education class you can give. And, and I'm just praying that you guys will, will allow me to go back to work.
Mr. Parliament, we have another question.
Because I don't have many more years to work.
Mr. Parliament, we have a, do you have any more questions, Ms. Newton? Okay, Ms. McFetrich?
She asked a question.
She did? Okay. Alright, if, do we have any more questions or-
May I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Sutton.
Um, Mr. Parliament, how, how many years have you taught?
I don't know. Eighteen years at, uh, Jacksonville. And, uh, I guess three or four years in Alaska. And, uh, three years at Mount Ida. I wrote the driver's ed curriculum for the Hot Springs Rehabilitation Center. I worked in Mariana for a year. Or maybe two years in Mariana, year and a half in Mariana. I started at mid-term.
Over twenty years?
Oh, yes.
Have you had any other prior reprimands?
Well, there was a fight that broke out at Jacksonville High School in which I blocked the door. The fight was in the hall and I blocked the door to the kids getting out. So they couldn't get out of the classroom and get into the fight. And I got a reprimand for blocking the door. I wasn't supposed to, toward the administrator, I wasn't supposed to do that. But if I hadn't done that, there would have been a bigger fight in the hall.
But pri, but-
No, no other?
Okay.
Nothing else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Thank you, Mr. Parliament. If there's no other questions, oh wait, Dr. Moore?
Yes, I do have a question. Um, I understand that the original sanction was a three-year probation. And this was moved down to a written reprimand? Do you, um, in a reprimand, it, it doesn't, are you having trouble finding employment because of this written reprimand?
Yes.
And is, because typically, a, um, a case that comes before us, they want it moved down to a written reprimand. You know, that's the lowest that we can go.
I'm sorry, I can't understand you.
The, the, you have received the lowest penalty that, that can go in this instance? And so I'm having trouble understanding why you are appealing it when it's already been lowered from the original?
Why should there, why should there be any penalty at all?
Okay.
I didn't violate the code of ethics. And to say that I did is just ridiculous. I mean, uh, how can you punish a, that's like, uh, a guy gets a traffic ticket and you punish the policeman for him getting a traffic ticket? I mean, uh-
Okay. Mr. Parliament? We, we appreciate your testimony. Do we have any other questions? Any more discussion? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parliament. We appreciate you.
Okay.
Okay, so at this time, as Ms. Freeno stated earlier, we need to do this in three different sections. We'll take three different votes. The first one is findings of fact. So do we agree with the PLSB on their decision? So at this time, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, um, based on what the, the code of ethics says that, and a violation can be, because of the reasonable action of a supervisor, it can also be an act of omission. I, I move that we agree with the PLSB in finding a fact that there was a violation.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Newton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Williamson and Ms. Freeno. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. The first question that you have to determine is whether you agree with the ethics subcommittee's determination on the fact.
On the fact?
Not on whether there is a violation. So the fact would be, Amy, that there was inappropriate conduct.
And appropriate behavior as well.
Okay, okay. Alright.
So that would be the first vote.
Thank you. Okay.
What she said then.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Newton, seconded by Mr. Williamson. Do we have any more discussion? Okay. Um, all in favor?
I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was trying to hit my button.
No problem.
I just want to make a comment based on my feelings on this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, when, when students have a substitute, they really take advantage. And I, I guess I'm somewhat sympathetic over, um, Mr. Parliament coming into the classroom. They're gonna take advantage of the substitute, whether they know him or not. Perhaps they pull the prank on him. I just, and, and even though, as Dr. Moore said, it is the, um, lowest penalty that can be imposed, in my personal feeling tarnishing a man's career, perhaps keeping him from getting another job because of the actions of a student. He didn't grant permission. Sort of a judgment call. But, but I oppose, and I'm, I, I oppose, um, tarnishing this man's record for the actions of a student. Particularly when it wasn't his classroom. And just knowing how, again, how students take advantage of substitutes. So whether or not this is the time to make that statement, I don't know, but I am making it.
No, this, this is the perfect time. It's, it's time for discussion.
If I may interject, um, I believe that the full gamut of, um, possibility, I believe the full gamut of possibilities is available, um, as far as a dismissal, a letter of caution, then a written reprimand would be the, the next step. And then on that from there. Just for clarification.
Just, just-
Again, I'm sorry, what the levels were. There can be a dismissal, a, a private letter of caution. The written reprimand is the third in line. And then probation, suspension, revocation.
Can you, that letter of caution, can you explain what exactly that does?
Typically, yes. Typically, if a letter of caution is issued, it is something that's kept in the PLSB file. It is not put on Ailes. It is not recorded on, as a licensure action.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying what I said.
Can I say something in response? Just, just, uh, this, I, I don't believe that Mr. Parliament was a, a substitute in what we think of as being a substitute teacher. He was a teacher employed by the district there at that particular school. And just in my mind, you know, teachers have a responsibility, not only for the classes that they're assigned to, but you know, uh, every, every, you know, time the bell rings, we step out in the hall and we monitor students coming up and down the hall. We monitor, you know, uh, changing of classes before and after school, you know, all different times of the day that we monitor students that, that you may not have a class with. And that responsibility does not change no matter where we are on campus or even, you know, off-campus activities. You know, that, if you look at the code of ethics, it applies even then. So, you know, I, 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 I am not viewing this as he was a substitute teacher. Uh, I'm viewing that he was a teacher employed by the district on that particular campus. And so that's the reason I stated, um, the motion that I did.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Any further discussion?
Ms. Newton, I, because you know, I want to ask you just based on the management style and, and you've got way more experience. Do you feel, um, you know, as a lead administrator, that maybe he shouldn't have been in that classroom?
I, I have been called to, to go into classrooms all over campus at different times when, you know, some sort of, uh, someone had to step out for an emergency or whatever. And, you know, that's just part of what a teacher does. And so, uh, I, I, you know, especially, he was a, a special education teacher in the, the, um, courses that he described that he had been through as far as, you know, administrators and, and all sorts of things. So he should have had the training that would be expected for that particular classroom, yes.
I will say this, that I, and thank you, Ms. Newton, for clearing that up. But it just seems like to me that every incident that, of, um, an infraction by a student, in every case, fight, throwing something across the room, whatever the deal is, I think that you could say that something could have been done perhaps to prevent that. And I think that's, and the way I'm seeing it, that's the case here. Yeah, you can say something could have been done. He could have perhaps gotten up or, or whatever. I just hate for us to take a position to, to hurt a man's career for the act of, of a student. Uh, he, he didn't have a, a, um, routine of doing that, from what I'm understanding. It's just, it's a difficult situation. Uh, and sad, but I, I just don't, I just don't see it. I just don't see holding the teacher responsible for one action that can happen in a classroom.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Do we have any other discussion? Ms. McFetrich?
This is, um, difficult. And I'm just wondering, because I, I think Mr. Sutton has kind of summarized how I, my feelings. But I'm wondering if the district didn't overreact because they were embarrassed. It was a very embarrassing situation. But for this gentleman, you know, basically loses his job over this, it, it, it's very difficult. And I don't quite understand.
Thank you. Dr. Moore?
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing, it, the written, what we're deciding does not determine a job or not. A district could have kept this, it could, could keep a teacher with a reprimand or even probation. A, a district can keep a teacher. So, um, to me, it is, um, and I hate to say it, but the larger picture of how are we encouraging teachers to be preventative? So that the, and, and I know you certainly, as a teacher, things have happened in my classroom too. But how can you take, take steps to be preventative so that this can't happen again? And I think here, you go through some training and, and, and we all need training at different points. It makes you better and you come out, um, and you can use this as, as a point to, um, show a district that you're learning and, and how to, how to mitigate in the future, if, if that makes sense. Um, and so I do want to separate that we're not, we're not imposing any sort of hiring in this case. And that's, that's how I'm looking at it, at least.
But I think what we're saying by our vote today will influence his employability. If I hear what, uh, what he said up there as far as him getting a job. Our decisions today is gonna influence his opportunities.
But we're looking, I, I mean, right now, if we uphold, it would be the written reprimand. And that would not prevent him in any way from being employed in any district in Arkansas.
We've seen many of these cases before.
Sure.
With probably, well, with much more strenuous, um, findings or violations and, um, and they go on to be employed several-
And have great careers.
Yes, and have great careers. So, um, I think we probably should just focus on, you know, as, as Dr. Moore said, what our responsibility is here as a board. Um, and that number one thing is defining the facts, um, that we're starting with. As, as you stated, the board has nothing to do with their employability. And even if the fa, the fact that they, he may have been let go from that district, that, that has no, um, that, that's not something that we're responsible for. We don't have that effect. However, we just, I think we need to, uh, focus on, as Ms. Newton said, um, what are the responsibilities of a teacher? No matter what situation you're in, no matter what classroom you're in, what part of campus you're in, whether you're off-campus. There are just things that, um, a teacher should always be doing. And, um, training that should kick in at different times. Um, and it's not to say that we're not human and that things don't happen. And maybe decisions were made, um, either way. But initially, we have to figure out the finding of fact. So that number one is, do we agree with the PLSB's finding of fact? So that's what we're voting on right now. Um, so we also, we have a motion that we agree with their finding of fact. And, and Ms. Douglas, would you remind us of what that finding of fact was? Just verbatim.
The educator allowed inappropriate behaviors by students.
Thank you. So we have a motion that we agree with the finding of fact that the teacher allowed inappropriate behavior by students. Seconded by Mr. Williamson. Do we have any further discussion before we go to a roll call vote? Okay, so we'll do roll call.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Sutton?
No.
Ms. McFetrich?
No.
Ms. Woods?
No.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Dr. Hill? Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Madam Chair, would you like to vote?
Yes.
Five yeses, four noes.
Okay, now we can move on to the second section. Um, and that is whether or not he violated standard two. Whether that finding of fact that we have agreed to is a violation of standard two. And Ms. Douglas, would you remind us of what standard two is?
An educator maintains competence regarding his or her professional practice, inclusive of skills, knowledge, dispositions, and responsibilities relating to his or her organi, organizational position.
Thank you. Okay, with that in mind, do we have, um, a motion?
A move that there was a violation of standard two.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Williamson. Do we have any questions or, uh, discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Sutton?
No.
Ms. McFetrich?
No.
Ms. Woods?
No.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Five yays, three nays. Five yays, three nays.
Motion passes. Um, and finally, the third item is, um, if, since we determined that the violation was, it was a violation of standard two, do we agree with the sanction or would we like to modify?
Could we move it down to a letter of caution that would go in his record and, and?
I believe we can.
If we, if we did the letter of caution, can there be trainings that go along with that? Or is it just the letter of caution?
It is simply just a private letter of caution.
Okay.
And can we add training?
I, I believe as a board, you can add trainings.
Okay.
I guess that they would go through the PLSB once they were, you would just need to make sure you give them a timeline to complete them and submit them. Because if they weren't completed, then they would have to come back here for a potential licensure violation.
Can be trainings then?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
I, Ms. spoke earlier when I said written reprimand was the lowest and I am thinking along the same lines. And I hope that, um, she's able to move on and learn from this and, and know that, um, we have seen teachers in, in much worse and much harder situations rebound and, and continue to accrue serving students as well.
So, um, would it be the pleasure of the board that, that we add trainings or just do the letter of caution? What is everyone thinking?
I definitely would, would support the training and the direction that we're going in. I don't know if there's a recommendation in terms of what that training might be or what it would look like associated with this private letter.
It would probably be the training that was recommended with the written reprimand. There was already a list of training.
There were three trainings recommended. The Code of Ethics training was recommended. The Power Paradox, How We Gain and Lose Influence. And then the 85% Solution, How Personal Accountability Guarantees Success, No Nonsense, No Excuses. Those were recommended as well as written reflections indicating how the trainings would affect the educators' interactions with students in the classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton.
So, I move that we have a letter of caution with the previous trainings that had been recommended by the PLSB board.
Did you, did anyone want to add the written, um, reflections?
With the reflections, submitting, yes.
Okay. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Chambers. So we have a motion for, from Ms. Newton, seconded by Ms. Chambers. Any discussion? Okay, if not, then we'll, uh, vote by roll call. Ms. Douglas?
Can you add a timeline?
Oh, yes.
For those, for those trainings?
So what would be a reasonable time, a semester?
Typically, it's either within 90 days of the state board order. It's our standard.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Online. Two of them are books and one is online.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So when Mr. Key is ready, we're, okay, we're ready for a roll call.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Sutton?
No.
Ms. McFetrich?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Seven yays, one nay.
Motion passes. Um, Mr. Parliament, um, we appreciate your years of service to the students of Arkansas. Um, and, uh, I think it's unanimous that this board, um, values your, um, years of service and, and values your, um, role as a teacher. Um, and I think a, as we grow older and we grow in our professions, there's always an opportunity to learn. Um, sometimes we make mistakes, sometimes we don't make the best decisions. Um, but that's part of, um, growing wiser and older is just recognizing those times and growing from them and making better decisions and just being a better person um, as we, um, just recognize those things. And, um, it happens. It happens to all of us. And I, I assure you, this is minor compared to so many things that we have seen. And, um, the, the experience that you have under your belt, um, and your heart for children, I'm sure, will help you throughout the years. And, and I'm positive that you'll bounce back and move forward, um, and be better because of it. So, um, hope that you have a happy birthday. Um, I hope you have a great day and, um, that life is good from, from now on. Thank you so much, Mr. Alguro.
Thank you. Can we make a excuse?
Yes, you can. Okay. Let's take a break. Let's take a five, seven-minute break. Let's take a seven-minute break. Um, let's see, it's 11:04. Let's meet, let's meet back at 11:15. That'll give us a little time. Ten-minute break, yeah. Let's take a ten-minute break.
Okay. We're going to resume from our break. Get back started on our agenda. All right, so we have consideration of requests for approval of nominated members for the professional licensure standards board to replace members whose terms are vacant on expiring June 30th. And we have Ms. Carly Saracini.
Carly Saracini, Assistant Commissioner, Educator Effectiveness and Licensor, Chair of Members, Secretary Key, I'm before you today for a nomination of Dr. Joe Fisher by Dale Query, and it is the representative from the Arkansas Rural Education Association. And this will complete all our new members for the PLSB Board. Dr. Fisher is a superintendent at Guy Perkins, and he has been an educator for 27 years. He would take the term that would begin immediately upon this appointment and end June 30th, 2023. So I'm asking that you approve this nomination.
Thank you, Ms. Saracini. Do we have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve by Ms. Chambers.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Woods. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move over to the Action Agenda B. We have a petition for minimum school district size waivers. Presenter, Ms. Jennifer Dedman. Good morning, Ms. Dedman.
Good morning, Jennifer Dedman, Attorney for the Division. I just want to check real quick that our superintendents are on. I see Superintendent Cleveland. Is Superintendent Rogel available? Okay. Dr. Fisher? Superintendent Thompson. Well, the notice letters did indicate the one o'clock action agenda, so it may be that our superintendents are not here.
Let's see.
If you'd like to continue with Superintendent Cleveland for Western Yale School District, we can go ahead and take care of that. Superintendent Cleveland, I see that you're on the Zoom. Do you have a connection, and then can you say hello?
Hi, I'm Owen. I'm Rachel Cleveland, the superintendent of the Western Yale County School District.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. I'll go ahead and introduce this item, and as superintendents are available, we'll move on to those if that's all right with the board. Okay, great. So this month, we have four districts that are seeking minimum school district size waivers. The first on the agenda is Dermot School District. You also have Guy Perkins, Strong Huttig, and Western Yale School District. If a school district is at or below 350 students according to the district's ADM for the two school years immediately preceding the present one, they must be placed on a consolidation list, and they must consolidate with or be annexed to another school district unless the State Board grants a minimum school district size waiver. To seek a waiver, the district files a petition with the State Board of Education, and according to the law governing these waivers, which is found in the code at 613-1613, the State Board shall grant a petition if the district demonstrates those items that are set forth in subsection B to A through D. So that's not permissive. It requires the State Board to grant these waivers if the school district meets those listed items. The department has gone ahead and checked into the factors that are required for the granting of each waiver. If the district is not classified in Level 5 Intensive Support, Fiscal Distress, or Facilities Distress, they're not on probationary status for violation of the standards of accreditation. If the school district facilities are adequate, as evidenced by the school district's facilities master's plan, and if the school board of directors passes a resolution in support of the waiver. The Division of Academic Facilities and Transportation did do a walkthrough of the facilities recently. They may have noted some things that the district might want to fix or clean up, but all of the districts listed today were found adequate according to their facilities master plan. You'll also see a little further down in that statute that one of the determining factors is that it's in the best interest of the students in the school district to keep the school district open due to the length of potential time spent on a bus by a student to and from school. And that's as assured by the school board of directors in the district in a resolution. You'll find that for all of the districts listed today as well. Are there any questions? Okay. Seeing no questions, Superintendent Cleveland is here to visit about Western Yale School District and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Dedman. I want to express my appreciation to the State Board and to the department for allowing me to appear by Zoom. We have made it really an effort to keep our people safe. And I think it would not be possible without Secretary Key, Farmer Secretary Smith, and Secretary Romero, as well as the Governor, and their guidance, and your guidance that you've given us, as well as the waivers that the State Board has allowed. I want to tell you a little bit about our COVID-19 here in Western Yale County. We have a population of 22,000. We have a positive. Those who have tested positive are 1,191, which is 5.4% of our entire population. It may really be the highest in the state. And currently, we have 1,140 who have recovered, which means we have 51 active cases. Now, we've had 25 deaths, which is maybe the highest per capita in the state. So we have been taking this COVID-19 very seriously. And we're very appreciative of the guidance that we received from the Governor and from the Secretary of Education and the Secretary of Health. We have sustained deaths with our employees. We had a custodian's mother-in-law who passed away. Our school nurse's mother passed away with COVID-19. Our county judge here in Western Yale County. As of today, and we appreciate the opportunity to open school up and have onsite instruction. As of today, we only have one child that's quarantined. We have no positives. And we're very grateful for that, because I'm sure you know how fast this virus can trap. We have a 54 square miles of school district, and that amounts to about two and a half miles, two and a half square mile, or one one square mile for every two and a half children. So we're fairly sparsely populated. We have currently three bus routes. One of them's 61 miles, one of them's 60 miles, and one of them's 57 miles. It takes us approximately an hour and 45 minutes to run each route in the morning and in the afternoon. And we we have some experience in March the 17th when we shut down. I'm sure each and every one of you, especially Secretary Key, can relate to that occurrence. And what we did here in Western Yale County is we provided AMI packets, and we provided as much online learning as we could. But we were unprepared, as were most districts. And what I ask each teacher to do was give me a one-page report of how you reacted when you found out we had to do multiple AMI packets. What the good things were about it, what the bad things were about it. And most importantly, I wanted a list of the students that they taught remotely and through the AMI packets, and ask for a report of each student, how well they did, whether they were exceeding the standards, whether they were average, whether they were below average, and when they didn't try. And this information has been extremely valuable to us in trying to recover what was lost during that period. As you know, the state has produced a back-to-school playbook, which many, many people were involved in. It's been extremely helpful. And then we have the Ready for Learning, and we have our plan to return to school. And our plan to return to school consists of if the parents and students choose, they could have all virtual. And our virtual is being really through the platform of Selus. We have onsite school, and the onsite school in the 7th through 12th is our platform, is Virtual Arkansas. We have access to the Virtual Arkansas catalog. And of course, we're teaching all our required courses, plus any course in that catalog that the students and parents want. And in our elementary, we have we have been awarded a $40,000 grant for literacy, and that's wit and wisdom. And we are using CSOW in K through 2. And we have access, we've got Engage New York for our math in the K through 6. And we are doing assessments. We're doing the math assessments and the interim assessments for the ACT interim test. So we're assessing and we're trying to make sure that our efforts are good. Now, as a matter of what where we were when I was hired back there, we had in July 1 of, or actually July 13th of last year, we had 39 Freedom of Choice applications to leave the district. And we had some general the community wasn't real satisfied with what the administrators were doing. And so we have tried to change the expectations. And all folks, all staff, certified and classified, are expected to do their job. They're expected to do well. And those expectations, even last year, have produced some dividends. We had 14 students qualify for national Beta Club. And that was the most we've ever had. We had one state winner, one second-place winner, and about four fourth-place winners. And so our children are beginning to attempt to achieve. We had a girls' basketball team that went to the state tournament for the first time in 28 years, because they were expected to do some things. They were expected to do good. And this year, we approached our professional development. We had three teachers test positive for COVID-19 during the summer when we weren't even at school. So the curriculum director and the principal and myself decided to do all of our professional development by Zoom that were allowed. Our principal had to go to some RISE training in person, but we have made really a gigantic effort. And the thing that impressed me is I have not had one teacher fuss about having to do that. They've just gone ahead and understood what they were doing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cleveland. We appreciate you giving us that update, Ms. Dedman.
Okay. You want me to yield for questions at this point?
Sure.
I'll be glad to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. If the board has any questions for Superintendent Cleveland, you're free to ask them at this time.
Dr. Moore?
Yes, I do have a question. I remember at some point in time that you all were moving to a four-day week. Is that correct? And if so, have you kept that up this year?
In January, we had a community meeting, and the board voted in January to go to a four-day school week. And we start at like 7:50, and we let out about 4:20. And that has started this year. Now, we realize that there are parents that are working. And so we have instituted a brand-new program called Friday School. In Friday School, we take those students that we've invited all those students that I mentioned that didn't do well on the AMI last spring. And we've invited all them. And what we do, we've got a certified teacher, maybe two of them, depending on how many students we have. We've got some parapros doing Barton. And in the morning, we have English, language, math, and homework. And at 11:30, we have lunch. And after 11:30, in this school district, last year, we had 87% of our students free and reduced lunch. And so we wanted to do something in the afternoon that would help our children have some opportunities that people go out in Little Rock and Fort Smith and Jonesboro and Russell that we don't necessarily get here in the country. And so we have some of our staff has agreed to teach guitar lessons, music, piano lessons. We've got one of our staff teaching drones. We've got one of our bus drivers who's a professional photographer, teaching a photography class. We've got hunter education coming. Got a professor from LSU that's retired here, coming to teach about animal habitat, about fire ant control, and things like that. We've got the Crawford Extension lady coming to teach all home ant courses. And we've got a dance teacher from Russell coming over to teach dance. The children have to go to Russell. We only have two or three going, but that's Friday School. And I think I'm having a science magician come next time. And what we did is we started the school late, and we're real thankful for that, that we had that extra week, because that really helped us. But we're having to make those up. As soon as the makeups are over, we'll go back into Friday School. But it's a unique opportunity for our students, and I think it's gonna work really well.
Thank you, Mr. Cleveland. Do we have any other questions?
Just one quick question. Mr. Cleveland, your enrollment this year, is it up or down?
The enrollment, now, what we had is we had a constant declining enrollment. And back in 1415, it's 422. And the 1819, it was 342. And 1920, it was 342.13. And as of today, we've got 344. Now, that does not include some of our students who went to ARVA, which is the Virtual Arkansas Program. They went to ARVA last year, so we've got at least six of our students that we expect back on ARVA. If they come back, that would give us the 350. But the good thing is we've had students from Two River that's come over here and want to enroll. We've had students from Dampel come that want to enroll. And of course, we can't take them, because they have to get a board-to-board transfer. The school won't let them go. So everything is looking up. The attitude is good. There was three churches that supplied our school supply, along with the Rotten Group. The Church of Christ provided some meals during professional development. I mean, we just feel some terrific support from the community.
Okay, thank you very much. I just, if I could ask a question about the process. So this is not specific to this district, but this is a I went back to look at the wording again, just to confirm. This is a shall grant the petition if, for waiver, if all of the conditions are met. Is that right?
That's correct, Ms. Chambers.
Okay, there's no other duty of care or understanding that we should pursue. I so feel for these schools and so appreciate the geography that they're up against. I just want to make sure I was doing what I needed to do to ask the right questions, to understand the circumstances for the district. And there's no, there's nothing currently in policy or anything that would make any comment about the number of years. So if a school has had an enrollment under 350 for multiple years, again, as long as all the conditions are met, that really doesn't matter. Is that accurate?
Under the statute, that's correct. It doesn't really give a lot of discretion. It says if they meet these items, that the State Board shall grant the waiver.
Excellent, thank you.
The board is free to make a motion at this time.
I move to approve the petition for waiver.
So we have a motion by Ms. Chambers to approve the waivers, seconded by Ms. McFectrich. Do we have, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Dedman. And I believe lunch is here.
Okay. We do have Dr. Fisher.
Madam Chairman, may I make a comment?
I believe that's Superintendent Cleveland.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I am here by the grace of the State Board of granting me a waiver. And you've granted me a waiver twice. And I think you've provided me more enjoyable stress than anybody has in a long time. And I just want to thank you for all that you do. And I think this will probably be the last time I'll be And I think this will probably be the last time I'll be appearing before you. I'm going to retire either at the end of this year or at semester. And one of the things that you have asked me to do is see if we had qualified paperwork candidates. And I posted my job, or the job here at Western Yale, and I'm pleased to report that we have eighteen certified candidates to fill my position. So, I just wanted to let you know that I did what you asked me to do.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cleveland. We appreciate your years of service to the students of Arkansas and you stepping up to this position and filling in and just helping this district through this difficult time. So, enjoy your retirement. And I'm sure that you'll be doing, enjoying your life and doing even better things. So, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you so much for approving the waiver.
You're welcome. Have a great one.
And thank you, Secretary Key.
Okay, Ms. Dedman, sorry.
Far be it for me to delay lunch.
No problem.
But we do have one more superintendent on the line.
Okay.
If the board is able to hear Dr. Fisher, that'd be great.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, Dr. Fisher is here from Guy Perkins School District. Again, this district meets all of the factors required for the granting of the waiver. They're not in Level Five, they're not in probationary status. The facilities are adequate, and they've got a resolution supporting the waiver and concerning the bus ride. So, if the board has any questions for Dr. Fisher, he's available to answer them.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So, move.
We have a move, a motion to approve the waiver by Mr. Sutton and seconded by Ms. Woods. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, please continue.
Seeing none, seeing none, the motion passes.
Superintendent Thomas has joined us.
Thank you, Board.
Oh, he did, okay, great. Let's go ahead and do Mr. Superintendent Thomas.
Superintendent Thomas, she's from Strong Huttig. Again, the district meets all of the factors required for the granting of the waiver. They do have their resolution supporting the waiver and concerning the length of the bus ride. I see that Superintendent Thomas has joined us. So, if you have any questions for Superintendent Thomas, she's available to answer.
Thank you. Ms., Dr. Moore?
Yes, thank you for being here today, Superintendent. I do have a question. I noticed online that the school was classified as a K-12 school. Do you have, is it one school with one principal? Or do you have many principals per building? I've not had the pleasure of visiting your district, so I wanted to see about that.
We are, I'm sorry, this Kimberly Thomas, Strong Huttig School District. We are a K-12 district. We have one building that is our elementary campus, and we have a building for our seventh through twelfth grade. But we are considered one LEA, one school district.
And so, you have principals at both campuses, is that correct?
I'm actually the principal and the superintendent. I have a dean of students at both campuses.
Okay.
All right, any more questions, Dr. Moore?
No, that's interesting. Thank you for sharing that.
Any further questions? Oh, Mr. Key?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just, I want to weigh in on this one particularly because Ms. Thomas has been an excellent member of the Superintendent Advisory Group that we put together within the last few months to help us with a lot of the COVID-19 issues. But I also want to say that this is a district that a couple of years ago, I had a number of concerns about. But Ms. Thomas has done a great job since she's come on board. You know, I bragged on Speaker Cleveland before at Western Yale, and I didn't want to belabor that one. But I do want to just make a comment about Ms. Thomas and what she's been doing there. Also, just to make sure that it's on the record that we've had legislative support for that. I know the Speaker of the House, Shepard, was going to be here, I think later in the afternoon. But because of the scheduling, we're getting this one done. And also, the Sonia Barker, Representative Barker, has sent us. So, just wanted to make sure that is noted here on the record as well with her support for this approval.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All right, then I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion to grant the waiver by Mr. Williamson. We have a second? Seconded by Ms. Chambers. All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Dedman. And with that, we will break for lunch until one. Or no, it's eleven forty-five. Let's do twelve forty-five. Is that going to be an issue with anyone coming on?
Not to my knowledge. It appears that Superintendent Rogel might be on the road. So, she was expecting to be here by one. She, I bet she'll be here by twelve forty-five.
Twelve forty-five then.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Going to bring our state board meeting back into order. And while we are waiting for another school district to get here for the waivers, we have Ms. Tracy Webb for the consideration of one-year standards for accreditation waiver requests.
And I think that was, they were on there earlier, Jeremy Mangram or Paula Wheeler? I don't see their names.
Let's see.
I know the second one Fayetteville is ready to go.
We can go ahead with Fayetteville if you want to do that.
The library media specialist in Washington Elementary in the Fayetteville School District took a position as a virtual teacher this year. The school has enrollment of 310 students, which is 10 over the maximum to have a halftime library media specialist. So they do have another part-time one in the district that they can move to that school, but they would still be over. They're going to require a full-time library media specialist, so therefore they are asking for a waiver for the library media specialist ratio for this school year, and that would be standard four F two.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have, I'm sorry, we do have Dr. Tammy Tucker and the Associate Superintendent for Administrative Services, and Greg Moniz, the Director of Human Resources for the Fayetteville School District.
Welcome Fayetteville School District. Thank you for joining us today. Do we have any questions for Fayetteville?
Thank you.
Dr. Moore?
Yes, thank you all for being here today. I know we received some concerns from, some emails with concerns about lessening the library media specialist position, especially when you have some students online. And so I wanted to hear how the district is planning to meet the needs of those students who are in person and online with this change.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to present and for your consideration of this one-year waiver. The district does currently have a one full-time library media specialist at a campus that's located less than five minutes from Washington Elementary School. And that campus's enrollment this year is below the 300 student threshold, it's 235. So the idea of the Fayetteville Public Schools is to have that librarian a split time between that campus and then Washington Elementary School's campus. And for serving the virtual students, the lessons that she's creating for her current campus, the videos and the online lessons that she's creating can easily be shared with virtual students for both campuses.
Thank you, Ms. Moniz. Dr. Moore, do you have any more questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was also going to interject that both of those campuses have a media specialist aide that will be at the building full-time.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker.
Okay, so students, both virtual and in-person, will continue to receive their time with the library media specialist each week?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Ms. McBeckett?
What is the student population then at the other school where you would share that staff person?
Yes, as of yesterday, that total enrollment was 235 students. And of that, due to the numbers of students requesting virtual learning or a hybrid learning where they're only going to be in campus three days a week, only 103 of the 235 students would be on campus.
I think what concerns me is the fluctuation that can happen as we're going through this. You may get some of those students that are off-site right now, but may come back into school in any time. How would you handle that at that time?
Certainly with our numbers, we monitor those daily, as everyone does, but we have room to accommodate additional students back into the other school. Leverett Elementary is the other school. With its enrollment of 235, there is plenty of space there, and still well below that 300 student threshold. And once again, those lessons that that librarian is creating, she can share with any number of students, whether they're on a hybrid schedule or totally virtual, from whatever campus she's at, she's able to serve both campuses, whether they're virtual and hybrid students. And then with the support of those library aides, one at each campus, there's always the opportunity that the library, that they can receive library services any time during the day.
Are you leaving the library open for students that are virtual students? Are those students welcome to come into the school and use the library even though they're a virtual student, I guess is how I should word that better?
Students wanting to access the library can definitely work through their teacher or the librarian themselves to arrange access to any of the materials that are inside the library.
So then there is a possibility that you would have more students coming in to use the library than that are scheduled at the school at this time?
The library is available. 312 students at Washington or 235 at Leverett, I suggest it is available to all of the students.
Okay, thank you.
I would interject that many of the parents that opted for the five-day home virtual learning option did so because they expressed a concern about entering the building during this pandemic. And so, to be honest, we are not anticipating large numbers of them wanting to access the building during this time.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Ms. Newton?
So if you have parents that are virtual with their child, and that child, they have concerns about them entering the building, how are you getting library materials and reading materials to those children?
The library, the media specialists are pulling those materials, and they can be left in the office so the parent can step in and pick those up. Many of our, even our classrooms on campus, the media specialists are pulling those materials and delivering them to the classroom. Many of our parents expressed a concern about moving students around the building, and especially into areas where other students, other groups of students had been. So at this time, we're kind of doing library to the classroom, so the same process would happen for those virtual students that would just be delivered to the office.
Okay, so this halftime person, is that person the one responsible for pulling all those materials, getting to the classroom and getting them to the office and having parents contact her? Is she the one that's going to take that responsibility for all those students?
Much of that is actually going to be done by the aide that's working in the library full-time.
Because if I'm adding right, you were looking at over 500 students that she's going to be responsible for, 300 on one campus and the 200 and something on the other campus. You know, if she's having to pull books for 500 and something kids, you know, and get them to a classroom or get them to the office, you know, I can see where she would be overwhelmed in a very short period of time.
I understand there is a full-time library aide at Washington and a full-time library aide at Leverett. And then the media specialist would split between the two.
So essentially, we would be looking at three people taking care of two schools, I guess.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're committed to keeping that, those aides at those two buildings for the entire rest of the year?
Oh, yes, ma'am. They are contracted employees.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments or discussion? Ms. Woods?
This may be ignorance on my part, is there additional certifications that a specialist has over a library aide?
There are.
Yes, our library media specialists have completed a master's program in library media for public schools and obtained a teaching credential, a library media specialist for their particular grade level that they're working in. Library paraprofessionals or library aides are not required to have credential degrees.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Ms. Newton?
This person that you got that's going to be going between the two buildings, have you discussed this with her and listened to any concerns that she might have?
Yes, and actually we have. Before school started, when we realized that this was going to be an issue, and we were able to look at the enrollments of each school, discussed-
Going to bring our state board meeting back into order. And while we are waiting for another school district to get here for the waivers, we have Ms. Tracy Webb for the consideration of one-year standards for accreditation waiver request.
And I think Elkins...
Is that right?
They were on there earlier, Jeremy Mangram or Paula Wheeler. I don't see their names.
Let's see.
I know the second one Fayetteville is ready to go.
We can go ahead with Fayetteville if you want to do that.
The library media specialist in Washington Elementary in the Fayetteville School District took a position as a virtual teacher this year. The school has an enrollment of 310 students, which is 10 over the maximum to have a halftime library media specialist. So they do have another part-time one in the district that they can move to that school, but they would still be over. They're going to require a full-time library media specialist, so therefore they are asking for a waiver for the library media specialist ratio for this school year, and that would be standard for F2.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have, I'm sorry, we do have Dr. Tammy Tucker and the Associate Superintendent for Administrative Services and Greg Monas, the Director of Human Resources for the Fayetteville School District.
Welcome Fayetteville School District. Thank you for joining us today. Do we have any questions for Fayetteville?
Thank you.
Dr. Moore?
Yes, thank you all for being here today. I know we received some concerns from, some emails with concerns about lessening the library media specialist position, especially when you have some students online. And so I wanted to hear how the district is planning to meet the needs of those students who are in person and online with this change.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to present and for your concession of this one-year waiver. The district does currently have a one full-time library media specialist at a campus that's located less than five minutes from Washington Elementary School. And that campus's enrollment this year is below the 300 student threshold. It's 235. So the idea of the Fayetteville Public Schools is to have that librarian a split time between that campus and then Washington Elementary School's campus. And for serving the virtual students, the lessons that she's creating for her current campus, the videos and the online lessons that she's creating can easily be shared with virtual students for both campuses.
Thank you, Ms. Monas. Dr. Moore, do you have any more questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was also going to interject that both of those campuses have a media specialist aide that will be at the building full-time.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker.
Okay, so students, both virtual and in-person, will continue to receive their time with the library media specialist each week?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Ms. McFectrich?
What is the student population then at the other school where you would share that staff person?
Yes, as of yesterday, that total enrollment was 235 students. And of that, due to the numbers of students requesting virtual learning or a hybrid learning where they're only being campus three days a week, only 103 of the 235 students would be on campus each day.
I think what concerns me is the fluctuation that can happen as we're going through this. You may get some of those students that are off-site right now, but may come back into school in any time. How would you handle that at that time?
Certainly with our numbers, we monitor those daily, as everyone does, but we have room to accommodate additional students back into the other school. Leverett Elementary is the other school. With its enrollment of 235, there is plenty of space there and still well below that 300 student threshold. And once again, those lessons that the librarian is creating, she can share with any number of students, whether they're on a hybrid schedule or totally virtual. From whatever campus she's at, she's able to serve both campuses, virtual and hybrid students. And then with the support of those library aides, one at each campus, there's always the opportunity that the library, that they can receive library services any time during the day.
Are you leaving the library open for students that are virtual students? Are those students welcome to come into the school and use the library even though they're a virtual student, I guess is how I should word that better?
Students wanting to access the library can definitely work through their teacher or the librarian themselves to arrange access to any of the materials that are inside the library.
So then there is a possibility that you would have more students coming in to use the library than that are scheduled at the school at this time?
The library is available. 312 students at Washington or 235 at Leverett. I suggest it is available to all of the students.
Okay, thank you.
I would interject that many of the parents that opted for the five-day home virtual learning option did so because they expressed a concern about entering the building during this pandemic. And so, to be honest, we are not anticipating large numbers of them wanting to access the building during this time.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Ms. Newton?
So if you have parents that are virtual with their child, and that child, they have concerns about them entering the building, how are you getting library materials and reading materials to those children?
The library, the media specialists are pulling those materials, and they can be left in the office, so the parent can step in and pick those up. Many of our, even our classrooms on campus, the media specialists are pulling those materials and delivering them to the classroom. Many of our parents expressed a concern about moving students around the building, and especially into areas where other students, other groups of students had been. So at this time, we're kind of doing library to the classroom. So the same process would happen for those virtual students, it would just be delivered to the office.
Okay, so this halftime person, is that person the one responsible for pulling all of those materials, getting to the classroom and getting them to the office and having parents contact her? Is she the one that's going to take that responsibility for all those students?
Much of that is actually going to be done by the aide that's working in the library full-time.
Because if I'm adding right, you were looking at over 500 students that she's going to be responsible for, 300 on one campus and the 200 and something on the other campus. You know, if she's having to pull books for 500 and something kids, you know, and get them to a classroom or get them to the office, you know, I can see where she would be overwhelmed in a very short period of time.
I understand. There is a full-time library aide at Washington and a full-time library aide at Leverett. And then the media specialist would split between the two.
So essentially, we would be looking at three people taking care of two schools, I guess?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're committed to keeping that, those aides at those two buildings for the entire rest of the year?
Oh, yes, ma'am. They are contracted employees.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments or discussion? Ms. Woods?
This may be ignorance on my part. Are there additional certifications that a specialist has over a library aide?
There are. Okay.
Yes, our library media specialists have completed a master's program in library media for public schools and obtained a teaching credential, a library media specialist for the particular grade level that they're working in. Library para-professionals or library aides are not required to have credential or degrees.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Ms. Newton?
This person that you got that's going to be going between the two buildings, have you discussed this with her and listened to any concerns that she might have?
Yes, and actually we have. Before school started, when we realized that this was going to be an issue, and we were able to look at the enrollments of each school, discussed with the librarian, and it was actually the librarian's recommendation to be split between the two schools. She did not want to lose contact with her current home campus, and she could, with the help of the library aides, definitely serve both campuses.
Okay, so last year before you hit 300, is that what happened, is that she was going between the two campuses?
Last year, both schools had enrollments of over 300 students. So we did have a full-time librarian at each campus. The librarian, the full-time librarian at Washington Elementary had requested to teach a virtual class this year and is being accommodated to do that.
Okay.
This year she is teaching virtually, and with anticipation that she'll go back to her full-time library media position at Washington Elementary next year.
Okay. And have you talked to the public, your parents and community members about what you're thinking about doing?
We've had discussions at the school level with the principals, with the administration, and they've had discussions with their faculty regarding how library media will be supporting the classroom for this year, with any concerns there. And we've, there's the understanding among our library staff of the entire Fayetteville Public School District for what's happening for this year, and they are supportive as well of direction we're moving for this one-year enrollment.
Okay. I would encourage you to reach out to your parents, also let them know what they're doing and what the process is for obtaining materials and that whether they are onsite or they're virtual, that they still have the same access to materials for their children.
Certainly, thank you.
I would also, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to add that with our numbers, we really wanted to be respectful of our student enrollments at both campuses. We could have moved a handful of students from Washington to Leverett, and both schools would have been under 300. But we wanted to be able to keep those students in their home campuses, and that's why we requested this waiver.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. To Ms. Newton's point, as far as your community engagement piece, as far as this waiver goes, I would encourage you to go a step further, not just to let the community know what you're doing, but to involve them in the process of how you're making decisions for the students of that community as well, along each, as much of the process as you possibly can to engage them and involve them in that process, and not just let them know what's going on, let them know what you're doing. Okay.
Another piece of information is that the actual standards require a full-time library media specialist when the enrollment gets to 300, and another one is not required until enrollment gets to 1,500, then it would require two. So there's not even a one and a half requirement, it's just a one between 300 students and 1,500, if that helps at all.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any further? Ms. Chambers? Okay, well, if we don't have any further questions or discussion, you can go ahead with your motion.
I make a motion that we approve this waiver request for Fayetteville.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the waiver request from Ms. Chambers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sutton. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Tucker and Mr. Monas. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, and oops. Go ahead.
So the other one-year waiver request was Elkins School District, and I don't know that I see their names.
Okay.
But are they, are they on there? Okay. So the Elkins, the next item is the Elkins request for one-year standards for accreditation waiver, also for library media specialist. So the Elkins Elementary and Middle Schools have each experienced some unexpected growth this year. In the past, they shared a library media specialist between the two schools because they were both under 300. This year, enrollment in both schools has exceeded 300, which requires a full-time library media specialist in each building. Both schools have approximately 20% of their students that will have requested virtual learning, and so they're requesting this waiver so that they may have an opportunity to search for a certified library media specialist for next year if the enrollment continues to be above 300. And I think their enrollment, they've gone, they've grown quite a bit this year. I don't have those numbers with me, but Dr., I'm sorry, Paula Wheeler or Jeremy Mangram, the superintendent, should be on.
Mr. Mangram, I believe is on. Mr. Mangram, welcome.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Mangram with Elkins? Ms. Newton?
Mr. Mangram, thank you for being here and having a growth in enrollment. I'm sure you're the envy of a lot of superintendents around the state right now.
We are excited.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Our previous one had said that they were going to give the librarian that was going to split between the two buildings some extra help. Do you have anything in mind as far as giving that person some extra help as far as a para or an aide?
Yes, ma'am. And if you don't mind, board members, I can provide a little bit of, a little bit more detail, if that would be okay on numbers.
Thank you, that'd be great.
Yep, these buildings sit right next to each other here in Elkins and Elementary and Middle School do. Previously, we typically average around 260 to 270 students per building. So in past years, we've had one library media specialist that was split between the two. We do have para-professionals that are always in the library, keeping the library open whenever the certified media specialist is at the neighboring building. This year, while many districts in the state have seen reduced numbers, and in some cases large reductions in enrollment, we actually are up in students, about 50 for our district, and it seems like all 50 is in that elementary and middle school range. So that put us at 300. Currently, we're at 304 and 305 students, respectively, in each one of those buildings. So that just nudged us over that 300 mark. That enrollment jump didn't happen until August. We saw a large number of transfer requests that we accommodated, and that put us over, and then we also had some people move into the district and didn't register until late. So that put us over. And basically, where we're at is, I want to staff with, staff that other position in the long run, to have obviously the full-time library media specialist in both buildings. But when you find out at the end of August that you need that, quite frankly, in what is still currently a critical shortage area, it's not probably going to be doable to find a qualified applicant, licensed applicant at this point. So that's the reason we asked for the waiver. The plan is to advertise that position through the winter and then hire that position to go to two full-time library media specialists beginning next school year.
Thank you, Mr. Mangram. Do we have any further questions? Dr. Moore?
See that you said about 20% of your students are virtual? Are those students being served by the library media specialist too?
They are. So the 304, 305 number, that was, that's everyone onsite and virtual. So onsite, we're actually at around 240 students per building, well below that 300 mark. But our media specialist is serving our virtual students. We actually invested over the summer in a pretty hefty amount of money into an ebook collection that the library media specialist could help give, give those virtual students opportunities to check those books out. We tried to mirror as much as we could what we had in our libraries. So we, again, we did invest quite a bit of money in that. And we are open to students that want to check books out. They can request those and come up and pick those up out of the library. So we are still serving those students if they have any desire to interact with the library media specialist or with our school libraries during this time.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, well, if not, then I'm ready for a motion. We have a motion to approve the waiver by Ms. Woods. Still have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who said that? Okay. Ms. Newton, seconded by Ms. Newton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Mangram. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda. I'm having a hard time never getting this. I keep, keeps putting me out somehow, I don't know why. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Dedman, I'm sorry.
All right, Superintendent Rogel's in the lobby, I'm going to go get her real quick. Okay. Superintendent Rogel is here for the Dermot School District. Just to recap from this morning, the department did check into the factors required by 613-1613, and the district does meet all of them. They're not classified in Level 5, they're not probationary status, the facilities are adequate. They have a board resolution in support and a board resolution addressing the length of the bus ride. Superintendent Rogel is here with, I believe that's one of your board members? The board president of the Dermot School District. They're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
No.
Well, thank you all for coming here today. I know, I've kind of looked back at enrollment over time, and is this, is this the first time for you all to be on this list, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I, I believe that there's just been a, you know, a lower population rate in South Arkansas going on. Has this been a slow stream of students moving out, or what has occurred that put you on the list at this point in time?
Well, I'm not so sure what has occurred, but at this, currently we have 367 as of yesterday. So it just, kids just move in and out. So yeah, we are, we are above that mountain now, so we're hoping to keep that.
Great. I did notice that, I guess, two years ago, looking back, both the elementary school and the high school received D ratings. And I know you all face a lot of challenges, but wanted to hear you speak a little bit on the academic side of things at your school.
Well, as far as academics, we are working on our curriculum. We have conducted curriculum audits to make sure there are no gaps or repetition between K-12 as far as personnel. We are meeting standards for as personnel. We are advertising as of now for a reading interventionist to help out with our reading scores at the high school level. We have two at the elementary, but we need somebody secondary. So we are making those adjustments to meet those academic challenges.
That's great, that's important. I guess unrelated, but this year, do you have many students doing virtual or most in-person?
Over half of our kids, about 50% of our kids are virtual at home.
Will that interventionist be able to reach those students as well?
Yeah, she's doing, she's doing pushing in at, at school. She's doing some push-in and pull-out, but she's already sending up groups through Google Classroom to meet those kids in, you know, their needs.
That's great, thank you.
Second. Aye.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Tracy Webb, Charter Unit. In August, the Charter authorizing panel unanimously approved an amendment request from the River Valley Virtual Academy in Van Buren School District to increase their enrollment cap from 275 students to 1,000, the charter share of students in grades K through 12. We should have Ms. Jennifer Feeney, the principal, and Nancy Robbins, the Director of Curriculum from Van Buren, to answer any questions you may have.
Just, thank you for being here. Just one quick question. Why did you choose to go from 275 to 1,000? That seems like a big jump. And how many do you have enrolled or potentially to enroll in your virtual academy?
It is a very big jump for us. We, in effort to implement the Ready for Learning model that our district adopted, virtual learning was a huge option for our students. With that, we saw a substantial, a substantial increase in students. We had approximately 1,400 students who expressed interest in enrolling with us. That is now, about 670 are enrolled with us right now. So we wanted to make sure we did not have to limit any students in the virtual model and that we could accommodate everybody that wanted that option during the pandemic.
Okay. What about training for your teachers? Because you've had, if you've gone that big of a jump, I'm sure you've added teachers in your virtual model. What kind of training did you give them?
We have, we have had quite a bit of training. It's been ongoing. Before school started, we did some training through our online provider Pearson, and they helped walk the new teachers through how to operate the system and how to enroll kids and best ways to navigate through the system. And then for the last probably three weeks, we've been doing training specifically for the areas that pop up, like monitoring students, communicating with parents. So we've been really targeting our PD over the last three weeks to make sure that, you know, what they need is what we're offering them.
Okay. And what about communication with parents and students? How is that going?
It's going pretty good. You know, it is, it is a difficult task to go from a lower number of students to increase to 670. But our parents, the way we have our kids grouped by teacher, the teacher is the main facilitator of all information. And I would say that communication at this point is almost daily with families, making sure that parents can log in, that the kids can log in, that the internet access is sufficient, and then just helping them with different technology issues that come up. So right now, I would say that we're, we're communicating a lot with our families.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I, and I know we're not having a hearing today, but I did want to ask on this. I noticed in your application, or whatever it was, you saying that the price per student has gone down because you switched curriculums. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, so in the past, we used Pearson Online Blended Learning Teachers who were contracted through Pearson as our digital provider. With the increase in students that we were expecting, over the summer, we decided to have a little bit more control over the teachers and the pace of the program, that we needed to start using our own teachers for our, for a vast majority of the kids. And so we were able to transition and actually save a little bit of money by using some of our staff that we have right now, since they have lower counts in their classroom.
That makes sense. And now, are you all able to attract students from out of districts into your school?
We are. We, we have several students that enroll with us that apply for school choice by May 1st. We have, you know, not very many board-to-board transfers, but that is an option for some students that come to us from other districts, but a vast majority do school choice to us.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you for joining us today. Thank you all for being with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Webb.
The next item on the agenda is the review of the Charter Authorizing Panel decision for Premier High School of Springdale. In August, the panel unanimously approved the Open Enrollment Charter application for Premier High School of Springdale. The proposed school will serve three hundred students in grades nine through twelve. The charter management organization for the school is Responsive Education Solutions, and they currently operate three of their charters in the state. The voting and comment sheet for the CAP meeting was included in the agenda, and I think we have Mr. Steven Gass, the superintendent, should you have any questions? And the board is to decide whether to review or not review the application.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Gass. Let's see, let's start, do we have any questions, start with Ms. Lucado. Ms. Sutton, Ms. Meftrich, Dr. Moore.
I did have a question. I noticed on the application, it mentioned that the local school district supported the, was that correct?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have Mr. Felton with me, who is the Director of Premier in the state of Arkansas, and he is going to also address that question, so I'll turn it over to him, and I will add anything if I need.
So, earlier this summer, as we were doing community outreach and providing information to individuals about the school and the community, we did meet with the district leadership superintendent, and he had no opposition, and we also started having conversations about how we could partner through professional development and other entities in the community where we can work together.
That's great, and I know you all have a unique model, and I think the more partnerships y'all have like that benefits everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Woods? Ms. Newton?
Comment, just, I wanted to thank you for, on behalf of the students, that I know that this will help, that sometimes people give up on, and so, I'm really glad to hear that you're gonna be reaching out to them. And also, thank you for the partnerships, because we know that it's gonna take all of us working together to reach kids and that especially need more help during the time that we're living in, so thank you for what you're doing.
And we very much appreciate those kind comments, and we are very, very excited about not only this new premier in Springdale, but also as we move forward throughout the years to try and impact as many kids in Arkansas that we can who haven't had the opportunity to, or for some whatever reason, have fallen out of the public school systems, to get them back and re-engaged and get them a diploma so they could be active participants here in Arkansas. So, we're very, very excited about the model, and very excited about what we can do in the future in Arkansas with this particular model of school.
Thank you. Dr. Hill? Okay. All right, if there's no more questions or discussion, we're ready for a motion. We have a motion to approve by Dr. Moore. Seconded by Dr. Fitzhill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Congratulations. And thank y'all for joining us today. Look forward to all the great things y'all will be doing in your communities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Webb?
The next item is for the Charter Authorizing Panel decision for Westwind School for Performing Arts. In August, the panel unanimously approved the Open Enrollment Charter application for Westwind School of Performing Arts. The proposed school would be located in North Little Rock and serve two hundred and twenty-five students in grades six through eight. Ms. Teresa Timmons is on Zoom, should you have any questions?
Okay, Ms. Timmons?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, so good to see you. Thank you for joining us.
Good to see you as well.
Welcome. Okay, do we have any questions? We'll start with Dr. Hill.
I just wanna say, I'm very familiar with this model that Ms. Timmons is bringing to the table. In fact, I know the research that she's done behind it, and I visited and worked with the Winding School of Performing Arts in Detroit, and I think it definitely fills a gap here in central Arkansas for the music focus on the community. That's currently a gap, that's had a specific learning outreach. I've worked with her during her summer programs for musically talented students, and I think this definitely brings a need to our community through outreach in performing arts.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Ms. Newton?
Thank you for filling the gap and stepping in to do that. My only concern is on a middle school standalone model. Sometimes those kids, when they come out of this model, you know, they're at a loss. Where do I go from here? How can I get my needs fulfilled? What are your plans to transition those eighth graders that are leaving your model? What have y'all thought about there?
Well, we're working to make sure that they are still with the Arkansas State frameworks, and they're able to transition still into the school district, any other school. Now, our long-term goal for Westwind School for Performing Arts is to expand through that and make it, build on that, bringing ninth through twelfth grade as well. But we want to make sure that we have a successful model, starting with sixth through eighth, and then eventually moving through to the twelfth grade.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Ms. Woods? Dr. Moore?
This is not a hearing, but I did notice on your application that you will provide transportation, is that correct?
That is correct. We'll start with one bus for the first year, and as the school grows, we'll implement and provide more opportunities for buses.
Great, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Ms. Meftrich?
When the department gives these charter applicants, kind of the legal, what do they call it, the legal review, does the applicant then come back and kinda answer these questions at some point? Because I'm not seeing answers in these applications.
Ms. Webb?
Ms. Mary Claire Hyatt, the ADE attorney, does review that during the hearing, and so they do come to a decision during the hearing as to what waivers will be granted.
You're welcome. Mr. Sutton?
I have a question, or really, it's just out of curiosity. Looking at your master's schedule, you have two advisory periods, I thought that was kind of interesting, just plus the intervention period. Could you describe kinda just, what's the plan for having the two different advisory periods, and what will students be doing in those?
Absolutely. I will let Jen Connor, Jen Connor, and she has been our curriculum specialist on that, address that.
Thank you, hello everyone. So, to answer your question, the intent behind the two advisory periods is to build and secure time to help support students develop and expand their social, emotional learning skills. So, the first part of the day in the advisory is relatively short, but that's designed to be a moment for students to reflect on how they're entering the building, their own feelings, emotional, physical states, and then sort to set themselves up to say, what is it that I need to accomplish today? What do I need to hand in? What do I need to prioritize in getting assignments done? Who do I need to ask for help? So, that advisory period, even though it's short, will have its own mini-curriculum that the teachers will follow. And then, the second advisory period will be a time to help students transition from lunch into the rest of the school day. And during that advisory, that is where students will get very explicit instruction and opportunities to practice along with adult modeling on the collaboration and cooperation techniques that they're gonna use heavily when they're working on their art projects together.
Thank you, that sounds really interesting, and I just thought that was kind of creative, building the two different advisory periods, so thanks.
Thank you. If we don't have any more questions or discussion, we are ready for a motion.
I move that we not review.
We have a motion to not review by Dr. Hill. Seconded by Ms. Newton, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Timmons.
Thank you so much. We're really excited to be able to bring this new innovative model to the school district.
We're excited to see what comes of it. Have a great day.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks. Okay, Ms. Webb?
The next item is a Charter Authorizing Panel decision. In August, they decided to unanimously deny the Open Enrollment Charter application for Diamond Cut Performing Arts Academy. The voting and comment sheet from the CAP meeting is included in your agenda today.
Okay, let's start with Dr. Hill, any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Nope. Dr. Moore? No questions? All right, then, if there's some more discussion or questions, I'm ready for a motion. We have a motion to not review by Ms. Newton, have a second? Seconded by Ms. Chambers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Congratulations, Diamond Cut. Thank you, Ms. Webb. All right, we will move on to the next part of the agenda. That's the Arkansas Leadership Academy, Dr. Ivy Pfeffer.
I'm Chair, Dr. Pfeffer is with the Governor at the press briefing.
Okay.
So, if we could pass over that item and move to reports.
Absolutely. Do you have any reports from our board member liaisons? Yep. Okay. That moves us to Arkansas Teacher of the Year. Ms. Lucado?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, and be short here today, but really, I wanted just to let you all know, kinda my passion, my message that I am kinda taking with me this year is really creating a culture that connects, and I think that's more important this year than we've ever seen. And, you know, as we, whether it's virtual education, whether it's in-person, I think the culture that we create in those classrooms is just of utmost importance in making sure that students' voices are heard and that we're building a collaborative culture together. So, that's been something I've been able to kinda get in and talk with at different schools. Been around this month to Clarksville, Cedarville. Made it yesterday to Henderson State and talked with some pre-service teachers who are in their internship, and it was really, really exciting to hear their experience as well. And so, that's kind of what I'm sharing. Alongside with that, we, I mentioned last month that we were looking at trying to get a podcast going, and successfully have, hopefully it will grow and be successful as it continues, but the well-rounded educator, and again, I think it just ties in with, it's a culture piece. How can we provide teachers with support? And using this as a platform to do that and really grow a teacher leadership in a variety of ways, and things that are directly in the classroom, but also things that are outside of the classroom. I'm really excited, we're two episodes in that have been released. We've got a few more that are already recorded, but our first episodes are, we're talking to a basketball coach, a classroom teacher, an administrator, we've got state representatives on there. So, really trying to branch out and bring voices and different perspectives to this and learn from each other. And I think that's kind of an exciting thing. But, last thing is, as we think about this year, and we know that there's gonna be lots of adjustments made, there already have been from the start of school, and we're trying to figure out what works and what doesn't work. I would urge not only the board, but our administrators to really keep teacher voice in the decision-making process. As we know, decisions are gonna be made throughout the year. Keep coming back to the people who are in those classrooms doing the work. And I put in a few quotes that I've talked to teachers, these are from all different districts, and I've tried to reach out to a lot of, you know, get different perspectives and hear from them and different grade levels. And so, I've included just a few of those that I think really kinda summarized the sentiment right now. And, you know, fifth-grade teacher who says, "This year is so challenging, I'm running around in class with my laptop with students on Zoom while I'm teaching my students in person." And how difficult that is, you know, to be able to manage both of those. And, you know, how can we continue to evolve and find what works and what's not? You know, eleventh-grade teacher, "This year is harder than I could ever have imagined, but it's worth it to see my kids." Like, and that's, there's all kinds of feelings out there right now. There's positive, there's negative, there's everything in between. You know, I have ninth-grade teacher, I have students who are in-person, here two days, virtual three, here three days and virtual two. And I'm working two jobs, because I'm trying to create lessons for two different places and give feedback in all of those. And all of these kindergarten teacher, my students have been awesome, they get excited to be with friends, even if it is at a distance. I think just to sum that up, it's hard in reminding, you know, everyone that we're working really hard at this. And as we continue to find those things that, hey, this was a good idea at the time, now it's not working, then what can we do next? Or, we thought, you know, this is a good idea and it is working, let's continue. But I think making sure that we elevate the voices of our teachers into those decision-making, all of that is really important as we move forward. So, just wanted to share what I've heard from teachers, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lucado. We appreciate you being that voice for teachers that you're able to contact in the community and letting us know what the heartbeat of the community is as far as our teachers. As you said, I believe it's so important for every stakeholder to have a voice in the decisions that are being made for our students, and that includes our teachers who are on the front line and who are in the classroom. So, we appreciate your work with that. I also just wanted to add, I had an opportunity with Dr. Hill. We both had the opportunity to work with the Little Rock School District, with the Graduation Alliance. We were able to work with them to call students who have basically fallen through the cracks, and they weren't sure if they had graduated. So, Little Rock School District is partnering with Graduation Alliance, which is, I believe, a national organization that works with different school districts to just make sure that those students that we're not sure about, that we reach out to them and see where they are. They have a program to where they can provide laptops, childcare, whatever they may need to continue and finish getting that diploma. So, we were able to go and with other community members, it was a great opportunity for all of our stakeholders to be involved. We had legislators, there was a legislator there, there was the Police Department, district-level people as well, and we were able to actually call them, call their parents, and to just check up on them and see where they were. There were several who had graduated, but it just was in the system incorrectly. And there were a few that had not graduated, but I believe Dr. Hill was able to get one where he has dedicated himself to stay in contact with them and to encourage them, and just to help them walk through that process. So, it was a great opportunity. I look for the next opportunity, hopefully, that'll be something I can do as well as far as getting in touch, contact with someone that I can encourage on a consistent basis. But that was a great opportunity, and I think it's a great program that Little Rock School District is a part of. Also, got an opportunity to tour the Dream Center.
City Serve. The City Serve.
City Serve, City Serve organization, where they have resources that are available to community entities. And what they do is they connect with the local church and the local faith leaders in that area to meet any needs of students, schools, whoever has a need. They can connect through the church, and the church connects to that organization. So, it was a great opportunity to see the warehouse, which is like, basically like a, it's almost like a Costco. So, everything that you can imagine or think that, a resource that would be needed, they have an opportunity to get, make that connection. So, I thought it was a great meeting, a great opportunity to connect churches with that organization to make sure that... to make sure that students get what they need. So a student can talk to a guidance counselor at the school. The school can get in touch with that organization and they can get the needs to that children, those childrens. So I was really excited about that and.
Tell about what you did with the pregnancy crisis.
Oh, yeah. Another thing that I do is I'm Executive Director of a foundation, Our Future Foundation, and we work to provide resources and funding to crisis pregnancy centers. And that was something that I brought up as far as a need that a crisis pregnancy center might have is wonderful formula. And to have it on stock in, in the crisis pregnancy center, especially with what happened with COVID-19. And you have mothers who have vouchers that they can go into a grocery store and get the milk. However, if there's no formula on the shelves, then what do you do? So with the crisis pregnancy center, that's something that they can provide. And so I mentioned that and immediately they were like, "We have almost a full pallet that we can provide to you." So my foundation is able to distribute that. So it's amazing. It's a wonderful organization. They've got great people that are leading it. So it was a great opportunity. And I'm, that's something that I look forward to working with the Family Community Engagement Task Force is to connect each school with at least one church in their local area, at least. Because we know that there's churches on just about every block and every corner. So if each school can be connected with the church, at least one, then that's another way for that school to get the resources that they need, so.
I want to just echo on that because we've been doing a teacher, like, within those churches. When Church, we're actually featuring them on the radio next week. They're, for Halloween, COVID-19, their church is actually doing a Halloween party drive-through through the toys and stuff that we've been able to, to give away. And yesterday, we helped house a child, a new childcare center that's coming online in the community and in the underserved community. So anything out there in your area, you have a church, we're doing, we've had all the superintendents from Central Arkansas, from North Little Rock, Palasie County, Pine Bluff, Little Rock School District. And I'll be working with the Commissioner that starting in October, we're going to be bringing all the superintendents from the Delta, that we're going to let them have access. And we've worked with Stuck Guard right now, Pine Bluff Churches. So I'm saying, when a, when a teacher can walk in and pick up $700, $800 worth of free classroom material for her, we set that up to be able to do that, but we work through a church to be able to do that because that's the connecting piece, the City Serve is trying to empower the local churches within the community. But the teachers get to come through and like she said, walk through Costco, Walmart and get everything free to put in their rooms or whatever. There is no cost at all. And this comes through City Serve, which we have probably $12 million worth of product in our warehouse to give away, to distribute throughout, and it's just coming. And as you know, Ms. Chambers, and when stuff's returned through Costco and stuff, they found that if you give it away, if you sell it, they, they found it on eBay. But if you give it to the church, they get it to the community. So that's why we're bringing in organizations like that to distribute this all throughout the communities. And so perfect example, North Little Rock needed for COVID-19, they want a screen, screen for their portable door so they could open up. We had those in inventory, so they came in within 48 hours, picked up those screens, went there and did that for COVID. So you ask for it, we'll try to find it, but that's what we're working to try to do. And I told her anything she needed for, for, for those families. That's why I left at lunch, the 100 families of Arkansas were over at City Serve. So I went to meet them, Paul Chapman, who worked with Reentry. We're trying to, those families get out of prison. We're trying to, we've got stuff that we're trying to take care of them to get them back in and to get them reintegrated in society. So whatever for the schools, that's at the heart of what we're doing.
Yes, I appreciate your invitation to that because that was a great connection. Appreciate your work in the community. You've been doing community engagement for.
Oh, yeah.
Years, so we appreciate, appreciate your, your work in the community and I appreciate that invitation.
Madam Chair, before you go on, just wanted to thank you all. There are so many things that you can get a little discouraged about as you hear how hard things are out there right now. And the fact that two of our board members are doing so much to, because everything that you're talking about, not only is it so good and so needed, it's sustainable. It's these, these relationships that you're helping reinforce and these connections that you're making. And it makes me very proud, so thank you.
Thank you.
If you're ever in town and you want to come by and visit the City Serve, you know, we'll be glad to. The Commissioner was there and, and, you know, we wanted everybody to see the, the material that's available. If you're renovating houses, we got material, you know, the toys. In fact, the Little Rock Police Department, Palasie County, we're now giving out toys to be in the back of police cars so they can pull over and give a kid a toy rather than, you know, pulling up, "Thank you, arrest, you're giving out a toy." You know, we want to change the mindset.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, go ahead. Mr. Key, you ready? Yes, that was all I had.
Okay. All right, so before I ask Ms. Smith to talk about the legislative reports, quarterly reports, just a few things that I want to go over. I don't have a, have it in a presentation form, but these are just some notes that I've made. First of all, I want to, in front of the board, thank all of the team members at the Department of Education throughout, not just the Division of Elementary and Secondary Education, but others, that over the last few weeks, we've had a number of opportunities. And so we have had members from this, this division that had to be redeployed to go help higher ed process many of the scholarship applications as we got into the end of the, the summer and beginning of the college term. We, we have had members who have been embedded and are still embedded with the Health Department at the Call Center. We have had our leadership, our leadership team members assigned to co-ops to help with the calls that come in when districts are looking at, need to make modifications to their onsite operations. Our IT team has done a fantastic job developing a system where we can collect the data, where districts can go in, put their information in as they are looking at the types of modifications that they're needing to make so that we can pull that and we can have that available for the press and for the public, for our research and technology team that has continued to work with the Wi-Fi broadband providers for the hotspots and supporting the virtual learning platforms that districts are using. You know, we just don't take enough time to publicly lift up people who are doing and going above and beyond. And I wanted to take just a few minutes to do that now. And also, since neither one of them are here and can't give me the evil eye, just for Gina Wendell and Ivy Pfeffer, just the enormous amount of work that they've been doing in support of our school districts, in support of, you know, it's taken a lot, just if you think about the number of students, 200 or fewer that we have at the deaf school and blind school. Gina, Greg Rogers, they've been very involved in working with them to get PPE. Been working to get PPE around to the other districts around the state because no one knew exactly how much they were going to need. They knew what they needed, but they didn't know how much. And so there's been a lot of work going on over the last several weeks. And I just want to tell you all how much I appreciate this team that I lead and the work that they do on a day-in, day-out basis on the weekends. You know, the calls don't stop on the weekends. So we have people that are on these call centers and doing this work over the weekends. And we're hoping for a day that, that that starts to subside. But, you know, we, we're not seeing it yet. But just anyway, want, want you all to know how hard your team works in support of the districts, in support of the students, in support of the teachers across the state. The first week of school, you know, as you can imagine, is always exciting and apprehensive and all the adjectives you can think of. But I got to visit three schools that week. And what I saw in those schools was preparation. I saw and heard from a lot of teachers that were very happy to be there. I saw kids that were being kids and what you'd expect them. I saw, I saw classes that had two students. I saw classes that had 20 students or plus, just across the board. Cafeterias where students were sitting at the end of a six, you know, each end of a six-foot table, knowing that the kindergartners had to eat very early in the morning and the sixth graders might be eating close to 1:00. And, but what I saw was schools that were, had made preparations, had planned, and then were also adjusting their plans. And after nearly three weeks now, we know that there are districts and the feedback we are getting, Mr. Lucado spoke to it and, and we've heard it. We've heard from teachers that it is not sustainable for them to manage their onsite class and at the same time be working with their students that are remote. So we are now hearing districts coming back to us. They're saying, and they're recognizing it, it's district leadership. And working with them to create adjustments to their Ready-for-Learning Plan. That's what we expected. It's working like we thought it would. They would go in for a couple of weeks, three weeks, see what worked, see what didn't work, and then come back and make modifications. Again, because this board allowed them the flexibility to do that. We didn't go in with this rigid approach of saying, "You have to do it this way or it's wrong." We want you to figure out what works for you and if it doesn't work, how can we support you in making it work? And the waivers are helping us do that. The openness of the administrators, the building level, district level, and the teachers, and then the feedback loop. I mean, if we didn't have good feedback, we wouldn't know. So we're getting that feedback, having these regular interactions. It has gone smoother than I expected. I've said that with the Governor. That doesn't mean it's gone perfectly. We didn't expect that it would be perfect. But we did expect that we would learn a lot, and we have learned a lot. And I think we've learned a lot that is going to help us as we move forward for that day in the future when COVID-19 is not the pandemic that we're all under facing right now. It will be, there will be a time when we, things we learn, coping with this, will help us have a better education system in the future. So I'm looking forward to that time in the future when we can recap and, and make systemic changes based on the positive things that we learn. So we continue to have a lot of these conversations, but I just, again, want you to know how, how dedicated these teams are, the district teams, building teams, the team here, to make this work for our students. Now as we move into the reports, are you going to report from there or are you going to come down here? Okay, it doesn't matter, whichever. Well, we can see you better here and be on camera. Ms. Smith and leading the OCSS team is, obviously, if you think about the work that now they are having to do in supporting these districts that had, were struggling in some aspect or multiple aspects. And so now, you know, add a pandemic on top of that and it, it creates even a greater burden. And they're doing, I mean, again, this is a group that, it's amazing, the ability and the talent levels that you have with, with this team that Stacy leads. As it relates to Dollar Way, you know that we are getting soon approaching the time where a decision will need to be made in December. And we don't want you to have to wait until December to have the information you need. So we're going to be talking about that a little bit. We have been working with a group called WestEd. They are an independent group. They, if you remember, in the past, we've had the Comprehensive Center that we work with that, basically they're like co-ops for state education agencies. And WestEd is now our group that we work with. The federal government, the Department of Education, had a procurement and they reallocated states and they, they named new centers. WestEd is our center. Working with them to provide an independent review and considerations for the options to present to you all as we move toward December with respect to, to Dollar Way. As you know, those options can include annexation, consolidation, reconstitution. And those are, there's a lot of information that you are going to need, I expect. You know, you will have a lot of questions over the next few months as we approach that time. We want to make sure you get the answers to the questions that you have. It'd be very important. We also want to make sure that the communities are very involved and understand the process. So that's part of what we're doing with WestEd because this isn't just about the state board. It's about the patrons of the district, the parents and residents. So with that, I would ask your permission to transition to Stacy and let her walk through these, this information for you.
Good afternoon. Stacy Smith, OCSS. So I do want to talk a little bit more about Dollar Way and some of the work with WestEd because I think that will help you understand kind of where we're heading. One of the main concerns early on was we were getting lots of information, but it seemed to all be coming from Jefferson County or Pine Bluff. And concerned that we weren't really hearing Dollar Way and this decision is about Dollar Way. And so really wanted to make sure that we did a good job in being deliberate about making sure we heard from Dollar Way community, teachers, administrators, really making sure that, that what, what was important to them was heard. And making sure that they also understood exactly what this timeline meant and some of the decision points. So WestEd, through our Comprehensive Center, they connected us to WestEd. And we're not paying WestEd to come in and do work. This is a part of their work that they do, you know, through federal grants or processes. So this isn't a paid consultant coming in to tell us what we want to hear, okay? They're independent and they have been digging into the finances of Dollar Way. They've gone back for the past five years. They're looking at trends forward. They've dug into the other districts around Dollar Way. They have looked at everything from crime rates to, I mean, they're digging into everything, industry, business, to make sure that we kind of really have a full picture. This morning, I met with them specifically about conducting focus groups. And we talked about the challenge in the past of Dollar Way community engaging. And so what would be the best way to approach it? And so what we're doing is, we've actually kind of started with a list of names that have been provided to us by Ms. Warren. These include former board members, people in the community that she's aware of. And we're going to start by calling those folks and, hey, can you get two or three people? And our goal was to do groups of three to five on a Zoom, together in a small group. And to do multiple meetings of these three to five in small groups so that we really can make sure people understand the questions and that they feel comfortable speaking up. If you have a large community group meeting and you've got 100 people in the room, sometimes you don't feel comfortable asking a question because you think everybody knows the answer but you. So we're hoping in this, this manner of three to five. And it's really about what's important about the Dollar Way School District to you, what's important about your community? You know, what does the Dollar Way School District have to have in place to be able to be successful in the future? Being able to meet specifically with teachers and that question of what have been the improvements in the past five years? And there have been improvements in the past five years. They're not where they need to be academically. I had the opportunity to walk through the schools this last week. And I can still see areas that I hope that I can come in with our team and be able to guide and support and continue to see growth in those areas. But at the same time, their teachers talk the professional learning community's language. They have documents of identified essential skills and a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Their, their buildings and their facilities are clean. They're safe. I still stand by that. I think Dollar Way and Pine Bluff have some of the best plans for COVID-19 in the way that they're keeping their students safe and delivering instruction right now. The thing that I see that really has to happen is the quality and the rigor of the instruction and intervention has to be increased. Okay, it is, it is, we're missing there right now. And that's in the idea of instructional models and setting some of those parameters up. But they have made, made progress. And I think this team, when they do their focus groups, that's going to be data pieces that they, they collect. that's going to be data pieces that they collect. The plan is for WestEd to be able to come back to us and say, annexation, here are the pluses, here are the minuses, here are things you've got to think about. Consolidation, pluses, minuses, things to think about. Reconstitution, and this is something, again, we, you know, we don't have a definition for it. And so I like it when people leave lines fuzzy for me. And this is where I really pushed them and said, you know, you guys are national, you see districts all throughout the country. What is something we haven't thought of yet? What could this look like? To honor the work that they've done, if they're not to go back to local control. And there are financial reasons that going back, you know, may not be the best. So they're working on that for us. They're going, the plan is to be able to come and say, things to think about, minuses. And so hopefully, we're going to be able to come to you and say, here are all these different scenarios, and here are the things that we've got to think about and talk through. And then be able to present that to you, then take that and take it back to these groups that we pulled information from, and let them provide feedback on specific things and have specific things to talk about that you get input on, so that when you then are making the decision, it's been, hopefully, it's been built so to get to the point where you can have a consensus, a consensus, or at least feel like you've made a decision knowing all the facts. But, you know, another point about Dollar Way right now that I want to praise Ms. Warren, and I think it just is another evidence that there's been growth. You know, Dollar Way used to experience that really high turnover rate year after year. And right now, in their elementary school and their high school, that's pretty much diminished. They still did have a pretty high turnover rate in their middle school, but they've had transition with administration, which leads to that. And so, you know, that's an area that's positive. Their enrollment right now is pretty comparable to what they had last year, and they are already in the process of finding kids who disengaged, so, who didn't register enroll. So it's kind of flatlining out a little bit. So there's some really positive things happening there that I think that you'll get to hear over the next couple of months. I'm going to pause there, see if anybody has any specific questions about Dollar Way.
What is their student count now?
Their student count right now is 946.
Dr. Moore?
So last month, I think you said 65% students are choosing virtual. Did that hold true? Has that shifted? And what is, how's that?
No, that's holding true. And when I visited last week and visited the classrooms, you know, at the high school, those kids go into their first period class that are there in person. And the difference that you see with them and some of the other schools is those kids stay in that first period homeroom class all day. And they have their headphones, they have their computer, they're already spaced out. So you have about six to seven kids per classroom. That teacher in the classroom with those kids for that first period, they're on their computer, and they literally do their Zoom lesson for their virtual students and those six kids in that classroom at the same time. So they Zoom for their 15, 20 minutes, and then the kids begin working in the Edgenuity platform or on individual assignments that were assigned, all right? When second period happens, those kids stay where they are. The teacher at the back of the room is Zooming, and they may have kids that are actually in the building but over in another room. And they're Zooming with those kids, they're Zooming with the virtual kids at the same time. But those six or seven kids, so they're doing a good job as far as containing, and breakfast is served in the classroom, lunch is served. When I was there, very welcoming and, you know, they have a wellness plan, and that's something that Ms. Warren has pushed from the very beginning, is not just checking to make sure kids are academically engaged, but that they're well. And Ms. Warren came to the CityServe meeting, and she actually toured the facility and the warehouse. And one thing that she said to me that I wanted you to know when I visited last week is she said, when we make our Wednesday wellness check calls and we say, how are you doing? We say it first, and we talk about academics, and then we say, how are you doing? And so, and we start, and she said, and we start asking about their needs. And she said, for the first time, we have a way to provide concrete needs. And so go back and praise your folks for that, because it made me choke up just now, but she felt it, and she's pulling in more churches to make that happen. But she has a plan, and that's supporting that plan. So thank you for sharing that last month. Anything else about Dollar Way?
With that, are they doing any sort of in-person checks with students who are doing virtual? Or they're doing video Zoom?
Oh, it's live. Those kids are Zooming in each period. Now, so let me go back and say that not, some of them are recorded. They are also uploading and recording. So if a student doesn't log in right then, they have to log in before the end of the night and watch their lesson to be counted present.
Okay.
And they have to complete their assignments. So if they, for some reason, and this was, and we talked about this with the high school principal, she said, I still have some kids who are working now, or they're watching their younger siblings during the day, and you're seeing those kids doing work in the evenings. And so that check-in part, one of the main things that, in the update, we kind of noted this, one of the things I think is going to be the most important thing that we do over the next month with the Edgenuity reports, is that we really learn about the Edgenuity reports and we pull them. I think there's lots of information to gain, you know, who's engaging, who's progressing in the curriculum, who's not. Those reports are only as good as you use them. You know, if you never look at them, then you don't know. So being able to really pull into those reports and making sure we know. So if you do have a child who is not engaging or is not making progress, I do believe that they're building a setup safely enough that they could actually talk to parents about bringing that kid back on campus, because they have such a good plan.
That's great. Thank you.
I really appreciate the plan. It sounds like such a good one, as you're working with the community and the school on what's best and what's next. Could you come back, you were talking about what would happen in the next month or months. Could you be a little more explicit, at least in terms of your hoped-for timeline that goes with this?
So my understanding is in December, the board has to make an action. Is that correct? Sorry. So the plan is in early November to come and be able to present to the board, here are the things that this third-party group wanted you to think about. Between October and November, they're doing those intensive focus groups. And then after it's presented to you, then we go back out to the community again for that feedback, and so that by the time we get to the end of the December meeting, you guys could make a decision. Now, I will say that there probably will have to be a working board meeting in there to be able to really dig down and dig into some of that. This is fast, and the WestEd group, you know, that's, they were the ones that could do this and do it well. We just didn't want to have somebody, we wanted somebody that could do it well, and they could do it, have the experience to do it as well.
Ms. Chambers, there's also a lot of internal, I mean, there have been groups with Go Forward, Pine Bluff, so, you know, there's been a lot of work going locally in involvement there. So I would expect that in addition to the WestEd report that we'll be providing, that there will be local, a desire from some of the local folks that have been working on this as well. And we're just, we'll have it, an opportunity to present it, lay it out there for the board, and, you know, get any follow-up information you need as we get ready to make that decision.
And with that, so Go Forward, Pine Bluff has done their own report and had their own consultants. What we are doing is we're connecting, their consultants are actually doing a focus group with WestEd to talk about the process, how you came to the decisions, what data points did you look at? So we're actually making those connections as well.
Could I ask a question? I appreciate the work that you're doing, especially with the WestEd. That sounds very promising to be able, for us to make an informed decision, and I really like the three to five focus group idea, because I know that that will make the community much more comfortable about expressing their opinion. But on our part, it just, and I know it's hard to get all data together in a short period of time. Being able to think about hearing data in November and then having for us to make a decision in December, it's going to be stressful anyway, and just that processing that information. Is there any way that, maybe in October, we might could get some preliminary information about some of the things that you're hearing and some of the things that you're seeing that we might be able to start wrapping our mind around what might be coming and some ideas that we could start mulling over in our mind and then get that other data in November, I think would make me feel a little bit better about making such a decision that it's going to affect a community so drastically.
Yeah, I think the suggestion of in October, being able to come and do just a specific report on some statistical data and information, specific to Dollar Way, would probably be important.
Just some preliminary, what you're hearing, what you're hearing from the community, that sort of thing. I think that would be helpful.
Yep, absolutely. Do you want me to talk anymore about the other districts or just the Dollar Way?
Let's go ahead and talk about the other districts. And just for clarification, we did consult with the chair and about how we're rearranging this process. So just, you know, that for some time, we've always had Little Rock as on the action agenda. Given the action has been taken already, you all have taken that action. We're now on the home stretch with less than two months. They'll be electing a board. That was really the driver for why things were on the action agenda. So we've gone back to just pull them onto the reports agenda. Just, I should have mentioned that early, and I failed to do that, so.
Just a quick question along that line. I know one of the things that we're going to talk about is the new cab member. And the board is going to be elected in November. What's the time process as far as transitioning from cab to an active board?
Well, I mean, the cab will go away and the board will, the date will be, well, and that's difficult, because you have several races that have multiple, you know, more than two candidates. So you could have runoffs. So I really don't have a clear timeline, but before, you know, by January, all those things should be in place. And even if there are runoffs. So they should start the new year, if not sooner, with this newly elected board.
Okay, so as soon as each board position is filled, then that board would take over, I guess?
Well, the board, it'll be a collective thing, because there's training that has to be done too. So they'll do the board training. And I will say this, Mr. Poor and the district team have really made an effort to get a head start on the training. They've had a couple of sessions, I think, that were potential candidates or now candidates could attend and hear from School Board Association and others on what it means to be a school board member of governance and that sort of thing. So we're a little ahead of the curve, I think, on the training part, but that will be a critical component. And then, like I said, with the potential of runoff elections.
Could I, as you're getting ready to start your discussion, Ms. Smith, about these other districts, this has been so helpful as you've approached Dollar Way. And I don't know if we have any other key dates, key decisions with these other districts, but anticipating and kind of knowing the approach, the on-ramp to decision-making and what we need to be thinking about, and if we do need to schedule some additional meetings so that we stay up with all this, that'd be helpful if you can coach us through that.
Okay, happy to, happy to. And I will tell you this, in the legislative report that you have, there are lots of links in there. The one that says DESI update and it says current next to it, that's really the goals that the OCSS office established for the district this last quarter. And so you can see they fully met it or they partially met. And that's also how I'm kind of operating with my team. We have very specific goals that we're working with on the district. And so that's kind of, so hopefully, we'll get to the point where we can start seeing, here are all these objectives and things that got accomplished. And these are things that have been provided support on, all right?
I just want to comment on that. I really appreciated the way you laid that out and really spelled that out for us. In looking at Earl, I'm just, wow, they have fully met or in the process of so many of their objectives. It's exciting to see that. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And it's helped, I think, our office to kind of have some laser-like focus on specific things. There are lots of moving parts, and I can tell you that there are lots of other things that these districts did, but these were things that we felt like were really important to get done. And if they weren't getting done, then it was detrimental to the district moving forward, or detrimental to students. So thank you for that. So for Pine Bluff, it's very similar to a lot of the things that you saw with Dollar Way, but they are two distinct, different districts. And Ms. Warren, I think, is, you know, she's new to Pine Bluff, and so there's this moment of getting to know the new district and getting to know her new administrative team. She's doing a really good job on facilitating between the two districts, bringing their leadership teams together when appropriate, but at the same time, there are things and decisions that have already been made for curriculum in these, both of these districts separately. And so still kind of honoring that and the work. Both of the districts, though, are going through professional learning community's training, and so you have that same language that is going across both districts. So I think that's important, and as this moves forward with Pine Bluff, they're going to get stronger in that area. Right now, one of the things that I thought was important to let you know is they've identified that there are 70 students right now that they've not connected with. So they know exactly who they are, they know who hasn't registered, who's not engaging, who's not in the process, and they're in the process right now of going out, finding those kids, finding where they are. Edgenuity, both in Dollar Way and Pine Bluff, they went full-blown edgenuity this week. So they've had it from the very beginning, but they felt like those first two weeks were about really getting, getting the health, the safety, the setup, computers, logging on, how do you Zoom? And so now they're really diving into the curriculum. Edgenuity is rigorous, which is a good thing, but I think there's going to probably be some, they're going to have a moment where everything's going great, and then it's going to fall out. You know, you have that learning curve, and so we've just got to be able to support them through that, okay? But that's kind of where Pine Bluff is right now. I don't have a lot of comments about Pine Bluff, because a lot of it mirrors some of the work that Dollar Way's doing. With Earl, one of the things that I want to brag about on Earl about is they were one of the first districts in the state to have their ready-for-learning plans, school improvement plans, ready. They do a really good job as far as planning and preparing. Where we need to strengthen is in the implementation part and making sure that we have full follow-through with high intentionality and outcomes. So those are the pieces there. Probably the biggest concern for Earl at this moment is still has to do with fiscal and some of the things that we're working on right now and paying close attention to. Lots, so they fully met on their Cycle Eight and Cycle Nine reports, but there is hands-on direct support from our office there in their office, okay? To get across the, to make a touchdown. So that's what we're working on there. But some of our concerns for Earl, because this is a small district, is right now they're down about 75 students. Their enrollment, oh, I don't have it written on this page, I want to say it was like 450 last year, so they're getting close to, it could be like 425 and maybe more in the 420s. It's on that financial report, Commissioner Kee, if you want to look at that, that link. Lee County and Earl both have had lots of students who have not engaged, and we need to do some searching. We need to start calling, knocking on doors, finding where they went. We're not sure. So that's something that we've got to do.
When education was just cut off, you have so many students that are just looking for guidance and direction, and nobody reached out. So they were happy that we called. Yeah, I want to finish, I want to finish my degree, but nobody, you know, so that may be that too.
Isn't that happening in virtually all districts across the state?
Yeah, we do have some reports for like Dollar Way. They've pretty much stayed about the same, which I thought was interesting. But then in other areas, we do have large loss or students that are unaccounted for. So Dr. Feffer's been working on a plan about, as a state, how do we make sure we're not losing kids?
I noticed in our local paper in Creighton County yesterday, that Earl's new elementary school has closed for COVID.
So they had one So they had one teacher who tested positive, and then they had a second. But what caused them to close was they had a social event outside of school in which 11 teachers became probable close contacts for the elementary school, and that's why they had to close. 474, okay. I was guessing all around there.
One thing that that as y'all are doing this, collecting this information, that was very interesting to me, that I had some concerns about, but didn't know how to, what questions to ask. When we're looking at virtual and and in-person education, I thought it was very interesting that the alternative education environments, that almost 50% of looking, maybe a little, that they had signed up for virtual. And I thought that was very interesting. When you already challenged, that now you're going to go a virtual site. And then how you're going to keep, I just thought that gave me great concern. You already were were.
Struggling.
Struggling. And then you're going to get the virtual aspect of it and not knowing in that environment, if you're an alternative, if you've been assigned to an alternative education environment, you signed up for virtual. I think that's something we just need to maybe examine a little bit closer on how we allow those, you know, because I think that keeps us away from saying, well, this kid, nobody reached out back to him because if he's not checking in, and I'm sure he doesn't have a support, he or she doesn't have a support. That's just something I thought was very interesting, if you could kind of clarify about that.
We'll call back up on that. Another area of concern, just just kind of hit the the financial part that we want to pay paying attention to, is really paying really close attention to their operating budget, but also monitoring their tax collection over the next couple of months and the potential impact it has on them making their debt service payment and payroll. Because they are, I mean, we're month to month, we're pretty close. And so those are things that we're watching for because this is a school, this is one of the reason why they were in state authority. So the those are big, big things to watch for, and we'll keep updating you specifically on that. For Lee County, Lee County, their area of struggle right now has really been around staffing and making sure that they have a full, a full staff that's onsite and ready to go. And they've had some some late hires. Ms. Murdock has rehired a new central office staff. She's had a high turnover there. Both of her, her one and two persons underneath her have left the district as well. And so she's had complete turnover. And so while everybody's working towards it, they have had probably, they're just, they're just a step behind in making sure everything is done and ready. But we have lots of staff on the ground there trying to support them. Had staff on the ground there today, really looking at the staffing issues and do we need to, you know, how many do we have actually showing up onsite, what teachers, and making sure that we've got that ratio correct and we've got the right people in the right place. So the human capital part for Lee County has been the biggest struggle. I will say, though, any superintendent who shows up on the first day of school in a superwoman, Superman outfit, she earned some points. Okay, so she went back to school saying that their teachers were superheroes and they dressed the part. You would have loved it. But they've got some challenges to overcome and making sure they got the right staffing. And until you have that, everything else is, you're going to just be off a beat in everything. And so that's that's their challenge right now. Little Rock, on Little Rock's report, one thing I want you to note, a lot of their goals, they fully met independently. And I wrote independently there because we did not support them to achieve that goal. That was something they did on their own. Our OCSS staff was not there making that happen. Okay, on the other sites, we were, we were given technical assistance. We were providing support. On some of these goals, we were not. They were meeting those on their own. In areas where you don't see independently, then we may have provided some technical assistance or assistance in getting that done. Okay, so that's kind of kind of shows you that. You know, Little Rock made a last-minute decision for the staggered start, which I think was a smart decision for them. And I think that it turned out to be a good thing for their schools and their teachers. It got them going. And then that second week, they went back with all of their students. They've actually had a really good start. We do seem to get complaints regarding their facilities and cleanliness. I had the opportunity to do unannounced walkthroughs through multiple buildings one afternoon. And I'll tell you, the majority were great. We did find one that that needed some help, and they they jumped on it that weekend. And so just they are tightening with checklist and things like that to make sure that they close that and that you don't have those one or two sites missing. You know, we had a complaint about, you know, water not in a bathroom. Well, when they really went in and looked, it was the battery and the sensor was out. So they replaced it. It was working. They left. Well, guess what? By the next day, it was out again. But they'd already fixed it. Well, so they've had to end up taking the whole thing out. And so there was something more. But, you know, what ends up happening is they fix the battery, they leave, and they never go back again. And it's kind of like, oh, we got that. So it's just tightening up some of those pieces. But overall, the buildings were clean, the procedures are there, and they're working hard. They still have improvements they can make, but they're they're doing those. And they're responding and they're listening. So I think they've done a good job there. The city government, the the school board part, you'll see more a little bit about school governance there and the actions they're taking. They have set up individual meetings with candidates to make sure they understand what's going on in the district currently, what the current plans are, having those one-to-one pieces. They've set up informal, other meetings and opportunities. They brought in ASBA to come in and do some training with folks. So they're trying to make sure that their board members are prepared and know what they're getting into. So I think they're doing a good job there. Any specific questions to any of those districts?
On Pine Bluff?
Oh, on the physical part of Pine Bluff, I see that some of their, the Sacagawea report, they didn't get it in on time. Is it because they're, of the changeover from superintendents, or are they needing more support in the central office? What's going on there?
So we are providing direct support onsite in Pine Bluff. It was kind of a perfect storm, but they were late. And they shouldn't have been. Just didn't get everything done that they were supposed to get done. Tasks were set, objectives were set, just didn't get it finished in time. And then didn't get the correct documents signed in time and submitted in time. So they were late.
Something that that as far as staffing needs more training, or it's just something that's just going to take time to fix? What's?
It's going, so I believe this is the second or third year for their business manager, who who, positive things are said, that we just need to continue to support the business office and directly support. You know, school finance is different, and there's lots of, you know, MOUs this and staffing here and making sure you have all those pieces done, time management and making sure all those pieces are done in a timely fashion to be able to submit your reports on time. Those are pieces that our office need to continue to support them on. So it's it's still very much direct support. I have someone on the site there in the district at least once to two days a week helping.
I've heard feedback, thank you, first of all, for your reports, for your team and the work y'all are doing and the work of the districts. I've heard on Little Rock, I've heard feedback that virtual instruction at the elementary level is not as far along as the high school and middle schools have been. Have y'all been monitoring the virtual lessons? And I know, I think this is right, districts are each differently. It looks like in the report it said in Little Rock.
So, so for Little Rock, they didn't, so they have a learning management system, Schoology, but Schoology doesn't have the lessons. Teachers are responsible for uploading their lessons. Okay, so for Little Rock, you have individual teachers creating those lessons. So you probably do probably have a little bit different from one class to one school. I have not heard that the lessons are, you know, weaker in elementary than than secondary. I mean, I've not heard that. Do I think that we probably have some teachers in the Little Rock School District and statewide who are struggling converting to virtual learning? I do. And I think that could probably be some of it. I do know that they are looking at what are the digital components in some of their literacy, like Hegarty, which is that phonemic awareness program. It's just now come out with a digital component. Wilson, which is their phonics program, is coming out with digital lessons. I don't think they released yet. But, you know, all these companies are trying to provide these curriculum supports that their districts have. So what you probably see happening in some of the elementary is those resources may not all be there yet, and you have teachers trying to create. Whereas secondary, a lot of the secondary content has already been made digital. You do have Lincoln Learning, and I do believe Little Rock is using Lincoln Learning in some elements, not holistically statewide or district-wide, but in some courses. So that you do have some content there. But that's something I'll be happy to check on.
Well, I mean, I know it's incredibly challenging both for families and for teachers. So putting no one at fault, but are are teachers at the elementary level teaching both in-person and online? Or are they able to delineate between those?
They're teaching both in-person and online.
Wow.
I do know that they have, each individual elementary school created their own plan. So in some schools, based on their numbers, you might have one teacher who's doing all the virtual kids and one who's doing all the face-to-face kids. But again, based on their numbers. But each elementary school was allowed to create their own schedule. But I'll be happy to go back and follow up with Mr. Poor and Dr. Owa and get more information on that.
Well, and I, it sounds like there's less face time for students, and that makes sense if a teacher is both doing in-person and virtual at the same time. I can imagine that would be incredibly challenging and wondering if the district will, you know, if schools look, be really watching the schools and if schools where it is working better, adjust as needed.
Yeah. I will go back and follow up. I'm sure that they're probably are doing some. I'm sure Mr. Smith, who is the elementary director, is probably doing some collaborations with elementary principals, but I will follow up.
Thank you.
One last question on Pine Bluff, Dollar Way. What has been the community reaction and and feedback on having one superintendent for both districts?
Well, when they meet Barbara Warren, they love her. So it's been very positive. And if you've been around Barbara Warren any amount of time, you love her. She's infectious. She's from that community. She's, she's, she's part of them. And her plan is, that's where she let her children go to school. You know, her family's there, they do business there. So it's been very positive. The, if I had to say that, you know, that moment of trying to learn your new administrative team and making sure that, she's wanting to make sure that she's honored the work that was done previously. And she's, she's going in and she's listening to what they've done instead of going in saying, this is the way we're doing it. It's the way we did it over here in Dollar Way, and it worked. So it's what we're doing here. She's not doing that. She's listening and she's trying to build some relationships. Sheila Whitlow, who's on my team, is the assigned superintendent out there, and she's spending two to three days a week in that district with Barbara. And, you know, just Barbara's doing a phenomenal job. But there's a lot, there's a lot of work to do.
Just from my education, so the state is currently overseeing five districts.
Yes, sir.
In the last 15 years, 10, 15 years, what's sort of the average of the number of districts that the state would have in its inventory, so to speak?
I don't know that answer. Do you know?
Yeah. We'd have to, I think this is probably the high watermark, five is. You know, before, typically it's around three or four, but there have been times in the past where there had been takeovers for fiscal. And you have to remember, fiscal distress is the typical reason a a district was taken over in the past. And that's a lot easier to resolve. So the timeline, therefore the overlap for the state takeover districts was not as long. You were able to move them in and out? Yes, sir. And, you know, Little Rock, I believe, was the the second district that was taken over because of what was then known as academic distress. Previously, I think Lee County had been taken over for academic distress. They were by the nature of, I think, a point three, you know, point three increase of their test scores in one year, then the threshold, they met the threshold to get out. So they were only in academic distress under state takeover for one year. And then we immediately, within two years of sending that district back, started having problems with with a number of things. So it's, it's really hard to say because of that fiscal component being a much easier def or deficiency to overcome. But that's, I'd say five is probably the max. We could go back and look and and see if there was a time where there were more than that. But and that's, I think this, and again, you see this year, we're going to have two. Little Rock's obviously be, has been reconstituted and will have a board in two months or so, an election for a board in two months, I should say, and then the training and all that happens when they get seated. And then Dollar Way coming up, and then it'll be back to what has been, say, a typical amount. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Just say before someone goes crazy about the comment I just made, Little Rock is going to have a board and is going to have a board seated after the November election.
That clarification, appreciate that. Okay, with that, let me see if I can get back to my agenda. Okay, that leaves us to new business. That's the consideration of the new Little Rock School District cab member, Sandrickia Mourning. And I think we need a vote to be able to to add. One moment. I'm not sure I'm getting this correct. Okay. So we will need a vote of the board to add, and again, to approve her appointment. So if I can have a motion to add or not to add this to the agenda.
Second.
So I have a motion by Ms. Newton, second by Mr. Williamson, to add this item to the agenda. And then do we have any questions or discussion before we take a vote to approve or not to approve her appointment? Seeing that we have no questions or discussion, I'm ready for a motion.
Do you got the motion?
To add. I need a motion to approve or to vote. I'm sorry. So we need to vote. So I don't need a motion to.
You got a motion and a second to add the item, and now we need to vote on that action.
Right. So let's, let's vote. Do we want to do a roll call? Let's do, no. Okay, so all in favor? Sorry. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say none, the motion passes. Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, to to help set, give some context, Ms. Mourning is a candidate, an unopposed candidate for a position, one of the new positions on the board. She also lives in the the current zone, I believe it's six.
Yes.
I think that's right. Where there is a vacancy. If I've, if I've missed, misstated the the number, please forgive me. But the the seat that she is, the area she lives in now, under the old district, there is an opening on the community advisory board. So it has been suggested that we appoint her to this position so that she can go ahead and start getting accustomed to the work, what's going on in the district. And then she'll take a seat in the new board when it's seated later on this year.
Thank you. Yes, it's, it is zone six, and it used to be zone two under the new district. Okay, if with that, do we have, we don't have any public comments, Ms. Freino? No, we didn't. We just did. No, we didn't.
Motion to add it to the agenda, and now a motion and a vote to.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Bear with me. Bear with me. Okay, so now I need a motion to vote, to, to accept it. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Okay.
Motion to accept.
We have a motion by Mr. Sutton, seconded by Ms. Newton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
And now, Madam Chair, we need to go back and take up item number four on the Leadership Academy. Dr. Pfeffer is here.
Okay, thank you. I forgot about that. Okay, thank you. Abby Pfeffer, Division of Elementary and Secondary Education. So this agenda item is related to something we actually were talking to you about or starting to talk about, I think, February, March, right before COVID. And so our attention was diverted for a while and we're wanting to bring this back to you for your consideration. But as you see on the agenda item, it is a request for proposal for the Arkansas Leadership Academy. And so to kind of put some, some context around the, the proposal, so since 2013, we have been on a journey to achieve our vision for excellence in education, which is that Arkansas will transform and lead the nation in student-focused education. And we all know that the development of school leaders at all levels of our school organization is a critical component to transforming education in Arkansas and realizing our goal. Outside of educational leadership degree programs that are housed in our institutions of higher education, the Arkansas Leadership Academy has been the primary provider of leadership development opportunities in our state. So as you look at the, the different areas where the Arkansas Leadership Academy provides institutes for teachers, for the, the master principal institute, team institutes for development of superintendents and school boards. So there, there are a lot of different things that are provided. Probably the one that you all are the most familiar with is the current master principal program. We just had those master principals come for designation a couple of months ago. But what we really want to do is take this opportunity as we've really thought about the work of our Arkansas ESA Plan, where we truly have moved school improvement from a, a mindset of school improvement is what you do if you're not doing well, to actually school improvement being the job of everybody. And leaders, teacher leaders, principal leaders, superintendents being able to lead the development of professional learning communities and districts through the process of really becoming high reliability organizations, becoming very effective and becoming equipped with the skills needed to really transform our schools so that we, at some point, get away from focusing on adequacy to really focusing on excellence. So within this RFP, it would, it would allow you to select the location and operator of a refreshed Arkansas Leadership Academy that, for the first time in a long time, really has some, some clear guidelines as far as, these are the expectations to ensure that the way we develop and support our leaders really aligns with our state goals and really aligns with the, the other things that are going on in our state so that we have leaders that maybe go into our most challenged schools and are able then to really take on that work and move forward. So the, the proposal is there for you and we've outlined a suggested process. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. And if everyone is comfortable, we would hope that you would approve for this RFP to be submitted so that we could have people start working on it.
Thank you, Dr. Pfeffer. Dr. Hill, any questions?
No.
Okay. Ms. Newton?
I really like the, the idea of aligning the Leadership Academy with our curriculum and what we're doing as far as, as, as far as the continuous cycle of improvement. The involvement of outstanding teachers in the Leadership Academy and outstanding principals in, in that institute is just a, it's a great idea. I did find one thing on the RFP that I think is just a, I think it's how it was formatted, but there, I did find something I think that you need to look at that was a mistake. I think that needs to be fixed on the draft, if you can... It was actually on the score sheet, on the first page of the score sheet, under teacher leadership. I think that second part of his teacher, teacher leadership has bled down into the use of experienced practitioners because it talks about describing the process of how current administrators are working, but it never talks about the teachers. So I think that, that one from above bled down into the, and covered up the one for teachers. Do you see what I'm talking about?
I'm, so I think I left my copy upstairs and I'm trying to find it on here. I had the summary pulled up. Secretary Key, do you see it?
Do you see what I'm talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. I think it's just a matter of the formatting. It just bled over and covered that one section of is what's happened.
We can go back and fix that.
Yeah.
And that's on the scoring sheet? Is that correct?
Yeah. But it was a super idea and, and I'm very impressed with the RFP. And if we can, the teacher, the Leadership Academy does great work now, but if we can get these improvements, I think it, we will see improvements that will be able to be sustained in districts, I think. So that's just great.
And I, I'm glad that you mentioned the practitioners because if any of you got to watch the education committee meeting yesterday, the, there were several principals from the PLC cohort schools that were there talking about the PLC process with legislators. But what was so powerful was the way they kept talking about the fact that the reason why they're so successful is because they had people who are doing the work, showing them how to do the work. And we've got some, some great people who have, have participated in this and other things that are, that are going well. And we've, we've really got that talent there to help support that if it's just focused in the right way.
Right. And, you know, teachers and principals that are actually in districts doing the work, coming back and showing other teachers and, and leaders how to do the work and then putting it on that career continuum, this is just a great idea. So thank you. This is just a few pages, but I, I know it's many, many hours of long, hard work. So I appreciate your team doing this.
The team has really worked hard. Thank you.
Questions? Dr. Moore? Anyone else? Okay. So we are ready for a vote, a motion to approve. So we have a motion by Ms. Newton, seconded by Ms. Chambers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you. And then to work with this, I think it would be a good idea to have a small committee, what's the word I'm looking for? A small committee from, from the board to work with this new RFP and with Dr. Pfeffer. So this is something we don't have to vote on today, but I think it would be a good idea to have three members from our board. So if you would consider, Ms. Newton, if you would consider it, and Dr. Moore, and Ms. Chambers, if y'all, if you three would consider being a part of that small committee from our board to work with that, I would appreciate it. Is that something that we need to vote? Okay. All right. So if you all are okay with that, then...
I think you as chair have the authority to appoint committees.
Okay, right. So just trying to make sure I cover all the bases. So I would appreciate if y'all would serve on that committee. I just appreciate your, all of your expertise in the different areas, your years of experience and Dr. Moore and, and Ms. Chambers, your years of experience in leadership and business. So we look forward to what you all will add to that from your, from your expertise. And I, if I'm not mistaken, I think we are at the end of our agenda. So we are ready to adjourn. Okay, great. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, if I may say, it's been nice having everyone here.
It has been, yes.
The first time that we've been able to get all of the, the members back in this building.
Yeah.
The, the in-person meetings, I think, have gone very well. And then the addition of, of bringing others in by Zoom to help stem unnecessary travel has been helpful as well. So I just have to give thanks to Dan and the team for making this work. It, it's been very smooth and a good job, Dan.
Yes, thank you, Dan. Appreciate you. Yes, thank you for, thank you for mentioning and bringing it up because we're glad to see Mr. Williamson back. We missed you. So, so with that, glad to see everyone. I look forward to seeing you all next month. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved by Mr. Williamson, seconded by Ms. Chambers. All in favor? Aye, let's go.